Okay, we will reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council members, Kozlowski.
Here.
Leary.
Here.
Raythel.
Here.
Roarba.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here. If you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Would you raise your hand, please, if you have a vacant seat next to you? We have a bunch of people in the back who may... Look, we got plenty of seating if you want to scoot in or come down to the front. Mr. City Attorney, any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We do have an additional information transmittal for item five on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. All right. This takes us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We're always happy to hear from you, but please understand that state law prohibits us from deliberating or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. If you want to speak now or on a future agenda item, please fill out a blue card on the back table there, hand it to Officer McCullough here at the front, and the clerk will call you up at the appropriate time. So I think we do have a couple of requests to speak on business from the floor.
Yes, we have two members from the public requesting to speak under this item tonight. I'm going to go ahead and call you up to the podium to go ahead and speak. The first speaker is Teresa Garcia, followed by Molly Slovak.
Good evening.
Good evening. I hope you all can hear me.
We can't. Hold on just a second.
That's my point exactly.
There we go.
I've been coming to city council meetings pretty regularly, and unfortunately, I can't hear much of what's being said because the city council members do not all speak clearly into their microphones when they're making comments or asking questions. And I would just ask that you afford the audience an opportunity to hear everything you say and every question you ask by speaking into your microphone clearly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that reminder. For some reason, we're getting a little feedback up here, so I apologize for that.
Okay, if I could go ahead and have Molly Slovak approach the podium.
Molly and friends, come on down. Right there, but you can lift that microphone up, so yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Molly Slovak. I'm flanked here by a few members of our planning committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like I mentioned, my name's Molly. I'm a Folsom resident. I've been here since 2008. I have three kids, one at the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school level. I'm also a former paratrooper, and our Folsom church here, I actually have a couple of members of our Reflections MCC church here. We usually do our worship and on Tuesday nights, but I convince them to show up here. On Sunday, Saturday, October 11th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Lyons Park, we're hosting the inaugural Folsom Family Pride event on National Coming Out Day, our city's first-ever queer-affirming LGBTQ pride celebration. It's free, family-friendly, and open to everyone, LGBTQ residents, allies, and neighbors who want to celebrate inclusion and support, the very people who call Folsom home. Full details and updates are at FolsomCAPride.com. Very briefly, what does the event... Why does this event matter to Folsom? First, belonging. Folsom Family Pride is a welcoming space where LGBTQ people and families, as well as allies, can gather safely and joyfully. When people feel seen and supported, they participate more in civic life, volunteer more, and help build the resilient community we all want and deserve. Second, safety and well-being. Folsom Family Pride connects attendees to queer-affirming nonprofit organizations, mental health resources, faith communities, youth programs, and local services. For some, especially teens or people new to the region, one conversation at a resource table can make a major impact. Third, local spirit and commerce. Folsom Family Pride activates a city park, brings neighbors together, and invites visitors who dine in our restaurants and shop in our stores. It showcases Folsom as a welcoming city and keeps goodwill, as well as dollars, close to home. What to expect at this event? Live music, arts and crafts, food vendors, and resource booths. We have trained volunteer ambassadors in coordination with partners to keep the day safe and family-friendly. The goal is simple, a joyful, a joyful, pride-centered celebration where LGBTQ residents and allies feel at home. Tonight, I have two simple asks. Number one, help amplify the event. Please share Folsom Family Pride, October 11th, Lyons Park, 10 to 2. FolsomCAPride.com on city channels where appropriate, and encouraging community partners to spread the word. And number two would be join us. We'd be honored to welcome each of you, your families and city staff. Come meet the local organizations serving our LGBTQ neighbors year-round and say hello to the volunteers making this inaugural pride event possible. That includes our LEO members in the community, who are also in the audience. Folsom is at best when we show up for one another. On October 11th, we'll do exactly that, celebrating LGBT community, uplifting queer-affirming resources and voices, and inviting every neighbor to be part of a welcoming Folsom. Thank you for your time and your leadership. Again, details are at FolsomCAPride.com.
Thanks so much. Yes, I'll let you go real quick.
Okay. Real quick, I just want to let you know, hi, my name is Jenny, and I am a mother and a Folsom resident, 20 years, and I have a daughter in the LGBTQ+ community, and I did not make her that way, but I love her, I support her, I am so glad that we are having this event, and that I am here to be on this committee because we really need this for our kids and for everyone else in the community. It's very important. I hope that you come out and support us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Is there Brett Hofstadt in the audience? You could go ahead and approach the podium.
Good evening, Brett.
Hi, there, Council, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak. I just want to make sure everybody here is aware about the NASA Space Apps Challenge coming up October 4th and 5th. It's an international hackathon that happens on the weekend in cities across the world. Here for Sacramento region, we're happy to have it happening at Folsom Lake College this year. It's a free event, open to everybody of all ages, and people that go to it this year will get a tour of the new STEM building at Folsom Lake College as part of the experience. We also plan to have some robots there, some other fun surprises. We have great sponsors from across the community. Two of the prizes we'll be raffling off are tours of two local aerospace companies. So if you know anyone, doesn't matter their age, teens up through adults, who love to innovate and work with NASA open-source data to create new solutions in a team environment, you don't have to know what you're going to do before you show up. Just show up there. We form teams there, have two days of innovation and creativity. And then on Sunday afternoon, everybody, every team gives a presentation to a panel of judges who evaluates them, and we have prizes for the winners and lots of fun. So, spread the word, tell your kids, your families, it can be adults too, and look forward to having a great turnout this year. We already have almost 100 people registered, so.
Great. Thanks for the information. Any other requests for business from the floor?
Don't, do not have any other requests to speak under this item.
All right. Call the first item, please.
Okay, the first item under scheduled presentations is a resolution of commendation honoring Fire Chief Ken Casano for his outstanding service to the city of Folsom.
All right, I feel like we've come full circle. I was the mayor when you were made chief, and I am the mayor when you are retiring. So, this is a resolution of commendation honoring Fire Chief Ken Casano for his outstanding service to the city of Folsom. Whereas Fire Chief Ken Casano is retiring after an esteemed career in the fire service spanning over 30 years, including 28 years of dedicated service with the Folsom Fire Department, and whereas Chief Casano has honorably served as Folsom's Fire Chief since October 2020, leading a team of 90 employees with professionalism, integrity, and a steadfast commitment to public safety, and whereas Chief Casano utilized his experience in construction management to serve as the project manager for the construction of Fire Stations 39 and 34, as well as the remodel of Fire Station 38, and whereas he championed the partnership with the Folsom Police Department, developing programs such as the Tactical Emergency Medical Service Unit and the Folsom Fire Investigation Unit, and whereas Chief Casano represented the city of Folsom on the California and Sacramento County Fire Chiefs Associations, the Sacramento Regional Training Chiefs, the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Committee, the Fire Safe Council, and the Sacramento Regional Arson Task Force, helping foster positive community relations and support, and whereas Chief Casano began his career with Folsom in 1998, holding various roles including arson investigator, personal protective equipment program manager, and paramedic preceptor, and rose through the ranks as a firefighter, paramedic, engineer, captain, and division chief, and whereas Chief Casano's career has been marked by a deep commitment to public service, strong community partnerships, and an unwavering dedication to keeping Folsom a safe place to live, work, and visit, now therefore I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the residents of this community, hereby extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Fire Chief Ken Casano for his exemplary service, leadership, and contributions to the Folsom community, and wish him all the best in his well-earned retirement, commended this 23rd day of September 2025.
All these people come out here just for me. Thank you. Now, first, I would like to just say thank you to this council, the city manager. It truly is an honor, and I was blessed to be able to serve our community as one of the public safety partners, and the other public safety group, nobody cares about them, so. Just had to get that out there. I mean, I remember standing here 28 years ago and being sworn in as a brand-new firefighter. I know Bob Holderness was up at the council at that point, and like I said, I've had an amazing career. There's so many people I would just love to thank. I mean, I came up through every rank in this city or in this department. I've been mentored by many great people, some are even here tonight, and I just want to say thank you for your support. My son is in the background. He was five or six years old when I actually was hired here, and thank you for your support. I'll be brief, that's it. I just want to say thank you very much. Thank you to our EMT team. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with all of you. Thank you very much. I can't, I can't, I can't forget the most important team, and that's the actual members of our department. And especially our, my administrative staff. It's been amazing and fun to come to work for the last five years as the fire chief, especially with you there every day, so I appreciate it, and thank you very much, and I will definitely miss being a part of this department, but I will always be a part of Folsom. So, thank you.
Okay, the second item under scheduled presentations this evening is a proclamation of the Mayor of the city of Folsom, celebrating the 25th anniversary of the sister-city relationship with Piave del Grappa, Italy.
And I'm going to have Gina Haskell and Jim Hartley from the Muir House come on down. All right, this is a proclamation of the Mayor of the city of Folsom, celebrating the 25th anniversary of the sister-city relationship with Piave del Grappa, Italy. Whereas the city of Folsom has proudly shared a sister-city relationship with Piave del Grappa, Italy, originally established with Crespino del Grappa in the year 2000, for 25 years fostering international friendship, mutual respect, and cultural exchange, and whereas this enduring bond honors Folsom's rich Italian heritage, exemplified by the life and legacy of Giuseppe Joe Muir, a native of Crespino del Grappa, who immigrated to Folsom in the early 20th century and became a prominent businessman, builder, and civic leader, and whereas Joe Muir's contributions to our city are commemorated through the historic Muir House and Gardens, a beloved cultural landmark that stands today as a testament to the deep ties between Folsom and his Italian homeland, and whereas the sister-city relationship was formally strengthened in August of 1999, when the mayor and delegation from Crespino del Grappa visited Folsom, leading to an official partnership rooted in friendship and shared values, and whereas in 2019, Crespino del Grappa and Paderno del Grappa merged to form the municipality of Piave del Grappa, continuing the spirit of cooperation and unity that underpins our international connection, and whereas this partnership is part of the broader Sister Cities International Program, founded in 1956 by President Dwight Eisenhower, to build peace and understanding through citizen diplomacy and global collaboration, and whereas the 25th anniversary of this special relationship is an opportunity for all Folsom residents to reflect on our shared history, celebrate our Italian roots, and participate in a variety of community events that highlight the culture, traditions, and friendship between our two cities, now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Folsom, do hereby proclaim 2025 is a time of celebration of the friendship with Piave del Grappa, and encourage all residents to join in commemorating the 25th anniversary of our sister-city partnership through celebration, education, and cultural appreciation, proclaim this 23rd day of September 2025.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. This is quite an honor, and we are very, feel very blessed to be a part of this. My grandfather was a great friend of Joe Muir and spent many, many days there at this property, celebrating together all of those who immigrated here from that region of Italy. So, I'm proud to be a part of it, and I am so proud to have been a part of this celebration and the Muir House to participate, and so much thanks to the city and everybody who participated, because what a great celebration we had here last weekend, so thank you all very much for making it such a special time.
I'm going to show you very quickly. So, last weekend, we had an expanded farmer's market, many thanks to the Muir House folks, Folsom Historic District Association, and our city staff for putting that together. Our library teen council, under the supervision of Amanda with our library staff, has put together what we're calling a culture capsule, and we are going to send this over to the Mayor of Piave del Grappa. I'm going to add some Snook's peanut brittle to it, and then it will be complete. But I just want to show you a little bit about what's in here. Stress ball from the police department. Lots of Vista del Lago and Folsom High School spirit ware. Some postcards and, oh, look, we got fire department badges, police department badges. We have Folsom postcards. They also made some bookmarks with some flora and fauna from our region. City of Folsom coffee mugs. Somebody crocheted a bumblebee. Anyway, lots of fun stuff in here that we're going to be sending over there. We also have elementary school-aged children in Folsom who are going to be writing letters to students in Piave del Grappa, so we just want to continue to honor this, this great international friendship that we have. So, thank you to the library teen council for putting this together and to Amanda.
Now you have to repack the box. Next item this evening was the consent calendar. You do not have any requests to pull anything on the consent calendar.
All right. All right. We don't have any requests to speak, and nobody wants to pull an item, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Okay, Council members Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Roarba.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item this evening is public hearing, item number four, Veranda at Folsom Heights Project, Resolution Number 11461, a resolution of the city council determining that the Veranda at Folsom Heights Project is exempt from SEQA and approving a small lot vesting tentative subdivision map, planned development permit, and design review.
Good evening, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor Aquino, City Council members. Jessica Brant with Community Development. I'll be presenting the Veranda at Folsom Heights Project to you tonight. The proposed project is a request for approval of a small lot vesting tentative subdivision map, a planned development permit, and design review for a 14.9-acre site located in the Folsom Plan area. So, the project site is located on the east side of Empire Ranch Road, or future part of Empire Ranch Road, and is surrounded by the Folsom Heights subdivision to the northeast and south, with the Russell Ranch subdivision to the west. It is designated multifamily, low-density in the specific plan, and it is this little guy all the way over here. So, kind of infill, almost. So, as I mentioned, the project is surrounded by the Folsom Heights subdivision. That's because it was actually part of the Folsom Heights subdivision approval. The city council approved the Folsom Heights Project, which consisted of both residential and commercial development on 189 acres in the northeast corner of the Folsom Plan area in 2017. The Folsom Heights Project includes residential units at varying densities, including an allocation of high-density residential units on two of the lots, which have the stars up there. These are the lots that are subject, are the subject of this subsequent mapping and project review. Improvements to the backbone infrastructure for the Folsom Heights Project overall, like roadways, stormwater basins, and utilities, are already in progress. So, this is the proposed project. This is basically north is facing to the right. It's kind of a long, narrow project site, so it's turned here, but it is a for-sale, detached townhome project of 125 small lots with common private drives, open spaces, guest parking areas, on two large lots that total 14.9 acres. They are calling it Veranda at Folsom Heights. Access to the northern and southern halves of the site, primary access is from a traffic circle on Summit Street, which is kind of cut down the middle of the project site, and then there will be secondary access points from Iron Horse Drive, which comes around the east portion, so there'll be two sites here and there. They are all going to be gated access points. Because this is a vesting map request, the applicant has included preliminary grading, drainage, and utility plans, which have been reviewed by our city engineer. So, the planned development component of this request, the residential units are proposed to be in cluster formations, fronting onto pedestrian passeos with alley-loaded garages. To support this development, the applicant is requesting several deviations from applicable development standards through the planned development permit. And of note, our requests for a reduction in minimum lot sizes, building coverage, and setbacks. I do also want to note that the applicant is not requesting deviations from parking standards or lot widths. The design review component of the project, so the project is subject to the Folsom Heights Design Guidelines, which were approved with the overall subdivision project. The applicant proposes four residential master plans with three different architectural styles or elevations. These are Spanish, California cottage, and early California. Nine color schemes are proposed, which are three for each architectural style. On the slide is just some samples of the renderings, and then the color and material samples for the Spanish style. All the units would be two stories, have three to five bedrooms, and include two-car garages. Floor plans will range from 1,400 to about 2,000 square feet of living space, and they would also have outdoor patios and covered porches. Further on the design review, the proposed project will install landscaping, bordering the site, and then also interior. The applicant proposes street trees at regular intervals along the two main private streets to provide parking area shading and to create a boulevard environment. The applicant has provided concepts for fencing and gates, which you can see on the slide, and residential back patio fencing as well, and then the project will include shared outdoor spaces in the form of passeos and pocket parks, again, an example on the slide. So, staff analysis, the applicant proposes the small lot detached residential product, which is about 8.4 units an acre. This is consistent with the site's general plan and specific plan land use designations. In addition, the project provides community focal points and a lower-cost option for homeownership than standard single-family residential, which supports the Folsom Plan Area specific plan goals. The proposed map, if approved concurrently with the planned development permit request and as conditioned, would comply with all city requirements, as well as with the requirements of the Subdivision Map Act. Staff believes that the alternative site design requested under the planned development permit provides a well-designed community within its own boundaries, and it has adequate access, service, and open space to serve its residents. And then finally, staff can confirm that the proposed site and architectural designs comply with the Folsom Heights Design Guidelines. And I will note as well that the Veranda at Folsom Heights Project qualifies for a special situation exemption, which is SEQA Guideline Section 15182, projects pursuant to a specific plan. So, after this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the project, and you have the language that we are recommending related to that approval on the screen. That is the end of my presentation. Price Walker with Elliott Holmes is here as well if you have any questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions for Jessica or the applicant? Councilmember Kozlowski?
I just have one. Because of the type of deviations from the regular standards, does this mean that there's additional units available here, and is that going to relieve density somewhere else? Or is it just going to overall add some density down in the plan area?
I think it, so they're within the expected density range, so it doesn't change the overall density for the specific plan area, but it, the, I think the development standards allow them to do this single-family kind of small lot product. Where they may not be able to, to meet that sort of density. So, it's, they're kind of trading off some reductions in the size of the lots for larger shared open spaces and, but allowing for a for-sale product.
So, it's not necessarily making more units on that piece of property?
No.
Than what have otherwise been planned for?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Raythel, any questions? This way, Councilmember Roarba, Councilmember Leary.
I have a couple of questions, and they come up because of my experience on the planning commission before, but I just was wondering if there was a view of what these passeos were like. You know, you mentioned that they had side porches or small, or small covered porches. Do those face the passeo, or do those face the side, you know, with the access to the garages?
It varies depending on the floor plan. So, some of them do, so with this slide here, you can see for this, this one at the end here, that would be a covered porch. There's also this little porch here, but this one would be towards the alleyway, but then for these folks, they're actually kind of on their side here, and then that gives them more of a, kind of into that passeo, and then they have a larger sort of porch area here. So, it really depends.
Yeah, I think it's a great product for people that want a smaller home, and I've visited some of these sites in other parts of our region, and one of the things I like about the passeos is that they've kind of offered some interaction between the neighbors, you know, if there's shared spaces out front, but I like the product, and thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. We, oh, Price, did you want to speak?
Just a couple of things.
Okay, come on up.
I was asked to be very brief.
(laughing).
Got a few things going on tonight. Mayor, councilmembers, um, Price Walker with Elliott Holmes. It, we're, we're very proud of this product. We built it, actually, at Gulf Links in Natomah. Pretty much the exact same design. The, uh, the question on the, the paseo is a good one. That's the front door for most of these, so you do get some interaction along the paseo, front door to front door. And it's got a bit of a jigsaw puzzle, so the, the private patio kind of fits differently throughout the site. But, uh, it's something where we've had a lot of success with, and we're proud of it, and, uh, want to draw, ask you to approve it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. We do have one request to speak.
Okay, um, the request to speak under this item is Alana Wagner. If you could want to go ahead and approach the podium.
Good evening, Elena.
Good evening. Um, this comment is not necessarily specific to this project, but it's applicable to this project. Um, really, all of these small lot subdivisions, um, with the exceptionally small lots and getting smaller, it often seems, um, in my opinion, did not allow for compliance with city expectations and municipal codes regarding trees in the front yard of each home, because even if they are planted, the space that's allocated is often not sufficient for, um, the ultimate size and growth patterns of those trees. And that's inevitably going to lead to what I have seen very frequently in Folsom Ranch, uh, which is constant code violations of tree removal within a s- the particular setback distance of city rights of ways without permits. Um, and I'd just like us to be mindful of that, that the urban canopy is extremely important to temperatures, to quality of life, to the beauty of the area. And I think we should be really thinking a little bit more about that, because I've seen a lot of unpleasant situations in my neighborhood and others, because we're not being mindful, um, of the growth patterns of those trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any other questions? If not, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
Uh, move Resolution Number 11461.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Okay, councilmembers Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Raythel?
Yes.
Orba?
Yes.
Hannah Kino?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, I'm just going to clarify for the record.
Oh, close the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Yep.
Okay, the next item under this evening's agenda is your new business item, item number five, Resolution Number 11463, a resolution approving general fund cost-saving measures for fiscal year 2025, '26, and beyond.
All right, um, we've gotten to the main event. Uh, I think for some of you, this may be your first time coming to a city council meeting, so I just want to make sure, um, you understand how this process works. Um, the city manager is going to make a presentation, uh, then there will be an opportunity for the council to ask questions. Um, and then we will, um, give the public an opportunity to comment. So if you think you're going to want to talk on this item, we ask you to fill out the blue speaker card. Um, give it to Officer McCullough. We already have several up here. Each member of the public will get three minutes, and we do have many people who want to speak, so we ask you to respect that time limit. Um, if you have a question that was not asked by the council, you can go ahead and mention that during your comments. I will take some notes, and then, um, once we get through all the public comment, we'll ask the city manager to address any lingering questions. So, uh, with that, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, great. Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. The item before us is to review some general fund cost-saving measures for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And, uh, I thought it would be appropriate to kind of talk a little bit about the process that has taken us to the point where we're at now. So back in May, uh, we held a city council budget workshop at the Folsom Library. The meeting was open to the public and well-attended. Uh, on June 10th, the city council received a budget presentation, held, um, uh, uh, held a public hearing and continued the public hearing to the June 24th meeting. Uh, we also had public feedback and, and conversations with the council at that time. On, uh, June 24th... On June 24th, the city council held a budget public hearing, received public input, and approved the fiscal year 2025, 2026 preliminary budget that included, uh, the use of just over $3 million of the general fund reserves. And, uh, we had indicated at that time that the, um, the, the various departments and city staff would look at ways to try to close that budget gap. And so basically, that's where we're at today. Uh, really appreciate the efforts of all our team that have looked at a variety of options. Uh, and I just want to say that this is, uh, not a fun time. Uh, this is not a place that we'd like to be at. Uh, this is not a place that we want to be at, but it's a place where, as we've looked at our current circumstances and, uh, trying to take into account, where do we want to be, not just next year, but in the years to come, uh, that we need to do something different so that we can close the budget gap, so that we can live within our means, so it gives us the chance to be successful into the future. So today, we're going over Phase One of our cost-saving measures. On October 14th, uh, we'll be talking more, uh, about those cost-saving measures, uh, and I'll kind of go into the de- details of the different plans. But before that, I think it's important also to kind of look at the general, uh, fund revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 24, '25 that just concluded. And so, uh, I put this image together just mainly to test your vision.[958.81][958.84](Laughter). Uh, but I'll zoom in a little bit. Uh, so this is kind of the general fund reserves, uh, or the, uh, the revenues, and so you can kind of look back, going back to 2019, uh, '20, and you'll see actual, 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 actual. And then, uh, for '24, '25, you see the actuals as of '99, 2025. So there's still some journal entries and other things that are happening to close out the budget year. But I would like to highlight that column, uh, which has the, uh, the, the actuals as of '99, uh, with the column 2024, '25, quarter-two amended budget. And so there's some changes that have occurred, and, and I think that's important to note. So we know the amended budget had, uh, estimate of $111 million in, in revenues, and the actuals that we're showing is $116 million. And, um, from our expenditures, this is just a more of a highlight that show, uh, you know, all the different categories from the city council to our police, uh, but I wanted to get down to the bottom line. So those same columns, the 2024, '25 actuals as of '99, 2025, and then the amended budget of, of, uh, 2024, '25, quarter-two, you'll see the net of, uh, $5,484,000 in that column, and then some changes with the different, uh, revenue increases and expenditure adjustments, and then transfers in, transfers out. We're now estimating, uh, the, the situation to improve slightly, uh, with, uh, $4,700, uh, 79,682. And so one of the things that kind of makes this convoluted and confusing is carryover funds or expenditures that were approved in a previous year that didn't occur until the current year. So this slide hopefully kind of highlights that. So when you look at our revenue, uh, including transfers in, it's $120,409,000. When you look at our expenditures, including transfers out, it's $124,489,000. And then there's a projected change in restricted fund balance or assigned for approved purchases of $4 million. So when we translate that, it actually means that, uh, the, the city's general fund budget finished to the good of about $102,000. So you can see at the bottom, we had the unassigned fund balance from 2021 at $19 million, and it's grown to $24 million in 2023, '24, and then just grows slightly to $25 million for the end of '24, '25. And so one of the things that you can say is, well, is there really a budget problem if we see our revenue increasing? Well, um, the expenditures, so when, when we look at a percentage basis of what the revenue or what the, uh, general fund, uh, reserve looks at, the expenditures for 2021 were lower than the expenditures for '24, '25. So our actual percent reserve is lower today than it was in, in 2021, when you had $19 million. Why is that? Is because our expenditures, whether it's, uh, inflationary, or whether it's, uh, you know, labor costs, just the cost of doing business, not just for cities, but for everyone, has gone up. And so we basically see a diminishing value of our, of our reserve, even though it's higher. Uh, this is, you know, balancing the budget, this is kind of the highlight where we were on June 24th, 2025, presenting the current year budget. And so this shows a use of the proposed, um, of, of unassigned fund balance of $3,038,902. So I'm going to highlight a little bit about our discussion today, and then what our discussion for October 14 will be, uh, like, and then we'll kind of get into those details. So for tonight, we're looking at, uh, discussing the reductions in full-time equivalent positions. Uh, that includes our finance IT department, which includes layoffs, uh, city attorney, uh, attorney's office, which includes a layoff, uh, a library, um, position, uh, and fire department positions, police department positions. Uh, the positions affected here are unfilled, whereas the previous two, uh, departments actually have, um, uh, individuals that, uh, i- if this proposal goes forward, will, uh, have their jobs eliminated. Uh, we'll also talk about our fire apparatus plan. Sometimes we pause for effect.[1229.81][1229.83](Laughter). Okay. Um, so, uh, we have number three, brief introduction of our community development, public works, uh, environmental water resources, and our park and recreation reorganization, and, uh, Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary Discussion. I don't think anyone's here for that, so we'll probably just spend a couple of minutes.[1250.74][1250.77](Laughter). So... Um, uh, Phase Two, which will take place on October 14th, we'll go into greater detail. So we'll introduce kind of our reorganization plan at kind of a macro level, and we'll go into the details, um, on the, uh, 14th. And so we will, at that time, uh, go over the cost-saving measures for parks and recreation, community development, uh, public works, and, uh, I think this is an important note. Our, our goal, we're having our heavy conversation today related to the elimination of positions. But, um, if the proposal is, is accepted by the council, uh, tonight, uh, it's our expectation that no further full-time employee layoffs are anticipated. So our current process, um, I, I think especially in our circumstances, it's important for us, uh, to be vigilant, uh, as it relates to our expenditures and our revenues. And so in either February or March, the city council will conduct an additional mid-year budget review to kind of see where we're going, even if these changes are, are, uh, approved. Uh, budget adjustments needed for that current, for our current year will be considered by the city council at that time. You know, really, I mean, as we go forward with this, we have options to live within our means. We can find new resources, or we can keep things as they are. Um, we will continue to look for additional rev- revenue streams, uh, but as we do that, that takes time. So our goal is to develop a plan that lives within our means and develop a budget with expenditures below our revenues. And this is once, again, an eye test, uh, but this is the cost-saving measures related to positions that gives the summary of all those that, that are being proposed this evening. Uh, as we zoom into, excuse me, as we zoom into those, uh, in our finance IT department, we're recommending an elimination of a GIS specialist, GIS technician, IT manager, uh, process improvement specialist, and all those positions are currently filled. Uh, we also have the elimination of a legal secretary position in the city attorney's office, and that's also filled. Uh, in the library, we have a reduction in full-time equivalence of, uh, from 12 to 11, uh, but essentially, uh, it's an unfilled position. We have a reorganization where we're reclassifying a position, uh, and we'll leave a library assistant, uh, vacant. Uh, moving on to the fire department, uh, there are, uh, seven positions affected in this. Uh, they are also vacant. We have a, a administrative technician, uh, a senior equipment mechanic, which, uh, of note, this has been a challenge for us to fill, and so, uh, we're utilizing contract options for that, and so we'll continue with that, but we're recommending that we, uh, eliminate that position. And then also five vacant, uh, firefighter positions. Uh, the police department, uh, also has, uh, seven positions affected, uh, a police lieutenant. Uh, we have a retirement, uh, coming up, and so we'll leave that position vacant. Uh, a police officer, we have four positions, and then, uh, uh, the community service officers, we have two positions. So just to spend a couple of minutes on, on this, related to the firefighter positions, if you look at the approved, uh, FTE total of 119.5, in the original packet, it showed 116.5. Because when the council approved the, uh, budget, it approved an allocation of police officers where three of those were unfunded. And so in order to be consistent, uh, we've added back, um, the unfunded positions, because we have a unique situation, well, it's not unique, this is a pretty typical situation with police departments now, is we have some that are retiring, individuals that are retiring, and then we have that constant job of trying to recruit and fill those spots as they come available. So, uh, having three unfunded vacancies allows us to continue the recruitment process to get that pipeline of qualified individuals ready, so that when those retirements occu- uh, occur, they can just move right in. So that gives us additional flexibility. So the recommendation is for the elimination of four funded positions, but not the three, uh, unfunded positions. And I'd be happy to answer more questions, uh, as we move forward on that. Um, as we, um, look at, uh, the total, uh, adjustments related to the general funds, uh, FTEs, it's a, a reduction of 20, uh, positions. Uh, five of those are filled. And so, uh, one of the things that's, uh, we need to talk about today is the changes for our, our fire apparatus and the, uh, the browning out of a fire engine. And so, um, with that in mind, I, I've asked, uh, our fire chief, Ken Cusano, to come kind of talk a little bit about where our apparatus will, uh, be located with, uh, the browning out of the fire engine.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, Ken Cusano, your fire chief. Uh, councilmembers, the, the apparatus, uh, movement plan is really just that. We are, we are going to be browning out one of our engine companies, one of the five engine company, companies that we have in the city. We developed a map, just, just so that you can see where stations are located, and then on the right-hand side is what will be at those stations. Uh, what we're going to do is, uh, move our Tiller Truck 35, which is at Station 35 right now. We are going to be moving that to Station 34. Uh, that will become Tiller Truck 34. The engine that is currently out there at 34 now will just be, uh, eliminated from our staffing, and that, that engine will become one of our reserve engines. Uh, the engine that is at Station 38, uh, we are going to move to Station 35, and it will become Engine 35. Uh, the other moves that are going to take place is, is our medic units. Uh, currently, we are running ten, two medic units right now, uh, Medic 35 and Medic 37. We have seven individuals that are going through their FTO period right now. Uh, once those individuals are cleared and able to work on their own, we're going to bring back, uh, Medic 36, which will be out at Station 36, and at that time, we'll move, uh, Medic 35 will go to Station 38 and become Medic 38. And that's the extent of, of our movement.
Great, thank you, Chief. And, and just from the standpoint, uh, because we have those field, uh, training still going on, that we had originally intended to make this, uh, if approved by the council, effective October 1st. Uh, but we won't have everyone, uh, necessarily trained and up and running to run on their own shifts, so we're postponing that, I think, until later in October, so that we don't see any time period where there will be, um, a, a fire station that doesn't have staff. So we're waiting, you know, a few more weeks to do that. So we were targeting October 1st, but we just want to let everyone know that if this fire apparatus, you know, kind of reassignment plan and the browning out of the fire engine is approved, that it'll take a, a few weeks longer for us to implement that, uh, just because we wanted to make sure that, uh, all fire stations had staff, um, and that there wasn't a, a period where they were vacant. Okay. Uh, so moving on, uh, related to our IT services plan, there were four IT positions that are proposed to be eliminated. Uh, that does not mean that we don't have a significant need for IT services. And in fact, our goal is to continue to utilize, uh, uh, information technology to enhance our ability to communicate with the public, and so we actually want to improve and get better in that, in that realm. So if this is approved, um, we, uh, have been in contact with, uh, an IT management firm, a firm that I've used before that is, uh, highly experienced in munis- in the municipal sector, and this would be kind of a temporary arrangement. I'm, uh, suggesting initial six-month period, so they can go through an IT audit, uh, and provide temporary IT management to help oversee our in-house staff and to help, um, provide service, um, with our internal customers as well. And then at that point, we would go out for an RFP for ongoing IT management services. And, uh, the, the next couple of slides, I'm going to turn the, the time over to our Community Development Director, Pam Johns, uh, to kind of go over our existing, uh, arrangement with our community development, uh, department, our parks and recreation department, public works department, and environmental water resources department. A big thanks to Rebecca Neves, Marcus Yasutaki, uh, and Kelly Gonzalez and Pam for kind of being the spear- the spearhead of this effort. I have been extremely impressed with their professionalism and willingness to collaborate and work together to try to come up with the best way to provide these essential services. So Pam.
Mayor, members of the city council, Pam Johns, community development director. This slide in front of you shows the existing organization of the four departments that Brian just mentioned are part of the phase-two cost savings discussion coming back to you October 14th with the mandate to look at, you know, efficiencies with the general fund budget and how we're delivering services, what we're focusing on in our core competencies. The four department directors got together on multiple occasions, rolled up our sleeves and talked about where there's overlap and opportunity to figure out how to deliver our services better, where we might need to consider reduction or elimination of services, and where we can do a better job collaborating or kind of repurposing our services under the four umbrellas of our departments. And so we looked at, we talked with other agencies, we looked at, you know, kind of pulled up every rock and looked at what funding sources are available to use other qualifying funding sources for expenditures, not just of, you know, staffing, but in terms of the additional services that we provide, and we're going to present that information to you on October 14th. But where we landed is here in a proposal that's supported by the city manager in reorganizing our services. And I'm just going to highlight a few things, but we feel really good about the direction that this reorganization is heading. And so EWR would be expanded to a broader utilities department to include other enterprise-funded utility services, most of which are organized through the courtyard location with solid waste and recycling, moving from public works over to EWR as well as fleet services to complement the water and wastewater services, operation maintenance, and infrastructure of capital projects that Marcus is currently overseeing. Public works will focus on the delivery of capital projects by formally organizing a capital projects team, transportation planning and traffic engineering, public property improvement and acceptance, as well as stormwater management. Improved collaboration between public works and community development in defining who does kind of development activity on private property versus public property and making sure that there's efficiencies that are recognized between those two departments. So there's going to be a reorganization of those engineering services and community development. In parks and rec, we'll continue to oversee planning, improvement, and maintenance of parks, open space, trails, municipal landscape with a focus on efficient planning and delivery of those capital projects in partnership with the best practices established through the public works department. And then the department will consider improved cost recovery for recreation facilities and programs, as well as strengthening strategic community partnerships, and you're going to hear a little bit about that this evening. As I mentioned, community development will refocus our efforts on the planning services for development activity and community building, maximizing our efficiencies and cost recovery for building services that include code enforcement, and then focus on that development engineering for private property. So we've, we've all talked about additional ways to update fees, and we'll be bringing forward qualifying use of special revenue and other funds for both staffing and services at the October 14th meeting, but we wanted to present kind of an overview that's driving that discussion that'll come back to you on the 14th.
Great, thank you, Pam. And just to highlight what you can expect to see at the meeting is we'll have the org charts that are associated with the departments, but we will also show the impacts to the general fund. So for example, as I mentioned, we don't anticipate any additional position reductions that are filled, but we may, as some of the realignment, have positions that are unfilled that won't be needed anymore because we're doing things differently. So what you will see also is, if you were to imagine a department, let's just say it's a department that has an impact on the general fund of 30 positions by utilizing some of our special revenue funds, or, you know, just as a case in point, we have a housing manager who, all they work on is housing projects. We have a housing fund, they will now be charged to the housing fund. And so what that does is it reduces the amount of full-time equivalents tied to the general fund and therefore saves the general fund money, even though we're still paying for the service, it's being paid from somewhere else. Another example is Prospector Park is currently being charged to the general fund, the maintenance there, but it's an eligible expense in CFD 18, which has sufficient funds to pay for that at this time. So those are some of the changes that you can see, and as we do those sorts of things, it reduces the expenditures that are tied to the general fund, which will enable us to have a better picture of where we stand financially. So moving on to the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary, I thought it'd be appropriate just to kind of, there's plenty of folks here that know the history better than I, so I apologize if I don't get this perfect. But the zoo began informally in 1963. Over the years, the facility has evolved from a traditional zoo to a sanctuary model. The Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary houses injured, orphaned, or confiscated animals, and unlike commercial zoos, the sanctuary doesn't trade animals or breed for display. It serves as an educational resource, teaching visitors about wildlife conservation, responsible pet ownership, and the stories of the animals in their care. The zoo sanctuary is run by the city of Folsom and supported by a strong network of volunteers and donors, including the Friends of Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, a nonprofit organization. Although the sanctuary is very popular with over 100,000 visitors each year, it is heavily subsidized by the city's general fund. The chart in front of you, I want to clarify, in the packet that was sent out, I appreciate Kelly Gonzalez reviewing my figures, I had added up the wrong revenue accounts, and so this is a little more accurate. So the information I had shared previously was this year's subsidy was anticipated to be 1.8 million, it's anticipated to be lower than that at 1.6. But you can see the 2024 figures and the 2025 figures at 1.3 and 1.5 and 1.6 million. So the reason why I think it's important for us to have this dialogue, and there's no action before the council today, I'm not recommending that we close the zoo. I have an 11-year-old, I need to go home to him. And so I think it's just, we're illustrating, these are the facts, and as a community, what are we going to do about it? Are there ways that we can generate partnerships or interest in the zoo that can slowly or over a period of time minimize the subsidy and ultimately eliminate the subsidy like other locations have done, where it's, you know, run and managed by a nonprofit, a foundation or some other thing? So this is not a conversation tonight to say, hey, how quickly can we close the zoo? It's, in many ways, to highlight this so that hopefully there's more community discussion so that people become aware of the challenge, and we can see who's out there. I try not to put too much pressure on my kids, I just say, hey, if you can just be like, you know, Steve Jobs or Bill Gates, that'd be great. So if they do that, they will create a foundation for Folsom, but until then, we're going to have to look at other things. So this is basically, just to highlight what this, what we're looking at, and there's been a lot talked about. So the staff's recommendation to the city council today is to improve a resolution that approves the fire apparatus reassignment plan and browns out fire engine 38, and approves the elimination of the 20 full-time equivalents that are, that were listed. And then that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council and then obviously from the public.
Council member Rohba, we'll start with you, any questions?
I have some requests, but not really questions yet, so I think I want to wait till after public comment.
Okay. Council member Larry?
Oh, I have a few questions, and thank you for your updates and revising some of those figures, I think, that we talked about the other day, and I'm glad to see you had time to put together a whole nother slide for us. I am, you know, concerned about, you know, the changes in the delivery for the fire services, and I don't know that we'll have a good measure of how that changes response times or impacts on residents until these changes have taken place. I do know that the residents south of 50 are concerned about, you know, their high fire risk as noted on the recent state-issued fire maps, and you did bring up that, they do have sprinklers throughout there. But I also wonder about the availability of water, not having an engine that carries water in an area, and I guess, you know, there's a lot that goes into this equation, like how many fire hydrants are available, and, you know, what is the, what is the capability of the one engine that will be left down there in case of a fire? And I don't know if that's readily available tonight. The, in terms of the zoo, I was surprised to see that was listed in phase one since there's no actual cost reduction projected at this time. And I have been meeting with the friends of the zoo as well as with staff and you to discuss how we might move forward with making that a viable entity. I see it as being a, an attraction, you know, somewhat like we're looking for adding to the river district and enhancing our economic development plans. But I would hope that you would consider looking at alternatives to just finding someone to come in and take over the zoo for us. I think there are some other options, and I know the Friends of the Zoo are working on some, and I think they'll probably get up and give us the details. But I'm very concerned about us not being a little bit more global in how we solve that issue. And the other answer, and I don't know if you have that at hand, is what is the cost differential between the cost of the IT employees that were laid off and the, what it will cost a contract with someone to do those services?
Sure. Okay, to answer. So related to the delivery of fire services, you know, Chief Cusano can come up also, but I think the plan that we have, I mean, and the reality is, is these are all difficult decisions, right? I mean, and so we can make justifications of why we shouldn't make any of these, but at the end of the day, we are a household that has a budgetary problem, and so households that are successful typically have to make tough decisions so that they can right-size their ship so that they can survive for another day. And so related to the fire service, you know, I actually went out on Sunday and drove, you know, through the Folsom Plain area and throughout the city and took pictures, and I didn't share those today, but the, the way things are south of 50 are significantly different than in some of our more established areas. If you go to Briggs Ranch, or if you're at the Beacon Hill, Lexington Hills area, where you have, you know, 60, 80-foot-tall evergreen trees, you know, I think the chief took that into account of where is the greatest fire hazard? And so although the state map shows the south of 50 as a high-fire hazard area, if you look at the maps, like, it wasn't lost on me that in the presentation, the public hearing related to the Veranda subdivision, it said it's denude of vegetation. And so looking at the fire hazard where there's not the significant urban forest, there, all the homes, all the structures there do have internal sprinklers, the chance of a massive fire event is less there than in some other areas that are older, more vegetation, and don't have the internal sprinkler systems. So that was taken into account. But chief, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Madam mayor, council members, Ken Cusano, your fire chief. City manager is correct, we did look at that when we were trying to kind of determine where the greatest risk was or the least amount of risk. And, you know, our tiller truck 35, where it's at station 35 right now, it doesn't carry water, it's not a suppression unit. It has, you know, our tiller truck is a specialized piece of equipment, they have different roles on fires. But when you look at it here at station 35, I consider this one of our highest fire-risk areas for structure fires. We have the historic district, and we have the central business district. Very little of that has sprinklers or any fire suppression system in them. When we look at south of 50 for structure fires, 100% of everything south of 50 is mandatory to be sprinkled, it has fire suppression sprinklers in there. Now, there's a little bit of a misnomer that there is no suppression capabilities with the tiller truck out there. That's not quite true because they cross-staff a type-three grass rig, one of our type-three engines, which does have water, and that's used to fight vegetation fires. So there is suppression capability out there, I'm just, when I talk fire risk, I was looking more at the structure fire or commercial fire risk. One of your other questions dealt with the fire hazard severity maps that we just presented here a few months back. Those were mandatory, that we adopt those. Part of that is those CAL FIRE maps, when they were, you know, drawn up and classified, I think they were looking at that area out there as just all big one grassland, which maybe that would make sense to be moderate at that time. But when you look out there now, there is, there is very little vegetation out there, there are roads put in, natural barriers. I would not classify that as a high vegetation-type fire risk out there now. Remember, part of the mandate with those maps and us adopting them is that the city was not allowed to lessen the hazard class that they were in. We could have increased the hazard risk, but none of that was really warranted here in Folsom, so we had to go with those maps and what they said. But in my opinion, I would not classify that as a higher risk than some of our other areas here in the city.
Thank you. I do want to thank you for putting the map up too that I asked about, so you could, people could identify where the engines are in relationship to their homes and the dispersment throughout the city of the services. That's helpful, thank you.
Did I, did I hit all the questions?
Don't go too far, though, chief.
Okay.
One quick, one quick follow-up, if you don't mind. Asking the extremely obvious answer question, in spite of the fact that rigs and crews will be at individual stations, they still respond throughout the city?
Correct. We still respond throughout the entire city. We still rely on our automatic and mutual aid partners to come in and help us with structure fires, or any fire, really, so.
That's all, thank you.
And then there was a question related to the cost differential for the IT services. So there's two components to the IT reductions. One is related to normal kind of IT services, you know, our software programs, our internal operations, and then there's the other components related to the GIS operations. And so with the individuals that are associated with the IT services, I have a proposal now, if we were to go forward with that, that would save us about $80,000 to $90,000 compared to what we're paying now for those positions. So those are still things that we will be able to fine-tune, so I feel very confident that it'll be that or lower going forward, and so that factored into some of the decision-making process.
And council member Larry, I think one of your other questions was how are we going to track the data and our response times? We currently do that now, and we're definitely going to continue to monitor that and just, you know, get that data as we go, so.
You have any questions for Chief Cusano?
And then, I did have the other question about the staff's willingness to look at alternatives to enhancing, you know, our ability for the zoo to remain in place and well-cared-for, you know, and I understand your proposal to have somebody come in and take it over, but I just want to ensure that it's on the table that we can look at other options.
But sure, and let me be clear, there's no proposal on the table. Simply what has been discussed is what I've observed and read about that others have done, you know, so for example, the Sacramento Zoo, my understanding that the city of Sacramento operated that zoo from 1927 until 1997, when they partnered with the Sacramento Zoological Society. And so I'm not saying that that's the model, whatever the model is, you know, we, we're not recommending anything today, and actually, this is not going to be my decision, it's going to be your decision. So I just think it's really prudent for us to look at where we're eliminating five good people from their jobs, we're eliminating, you know, basically 14 good people from their jobs, we're eliminating, you know, basically 14 positions from public safety, and yet we have a zoo. So I just think, as good as it is, when we're making these type of decisions, does it deserve some thought and some, some consideration? And so I'm not saying that we do anything, ultimately you guys will decide, you know, what, how that goes, and, and I will help us get to wherever you guys want me to get to, I just think it's not, I think this is important for us to not, we need to think about it, I think we just need to think about it.
I totally agree, thank you.
Any questions for Chief Cusano over here?
I do have a follow-up, what is our response time?
Currently, right now, on average, we're around 6 minutes and 32 seconds.
And do we, do we keep that in different areas of the city? How do we report that out to the general public?
I, I'd have to ask our assistant back here, I, I believe we try to put that on our website and our other social media platforms.
I'd just like to request that at our next council meeting, we get very clear, I think the question from, that I've heard most is, is how does this affect response times? And again, we say that it's going to affect response times, but I'm up here, I don't even know what our response time is, and I definitely don't know what it is last year, or the year before that, or the year before that, and I, I think we do need to get better at reporting metrics, and what the citizen should expect, it's not saying that every time you, you need that support, it's going to show up in 6 minutes and 32 seconds, but, you know, if we report a low and a high, and then an average, I think that really helps the public evaluate and understand what the impacts of the, of the changes are going to be.
And, and the good news is that all that data is available, and we can compile that. I think what we need to do is more proactively staff to bring that to the council, I've talked to a few of the members already, and that, that request has been made. And so one of the best ways to kind of measure the impacts if the council were to approve this is, hey, six months from now, I mean, let's compare the data before the decision, and let's see the data after the decision, and see what that really means. If our average is, you know, 6 minutes and 30 seconds, and now that's 6 minutes and 40 seconds, or 7 minutes, or 8 minutes, we would know. And so we recognize, I mean, one of the, the clear messages that I hope to the council and to community is that, me as your city manager, I'm not making any special promises that, hey, everything is just going to be as it was. These are really hard decisions that are significant, you know, reductions in force and reductions in services. So I'm not saying, hey, everything's fine, we're just going to do more with less, we're actually going to do less with less, and that's just how it is related to our budget structure. And so how we do that, and how we manage those resources is ultimately up to the community to provide comment, and for us to put together proposals, and for the, the council to consider those. And so, we've given considerable thought of where we're at and where we think we need to be, and we're always open for, for input.
You have another question for Chief Cusano?
No, not for Chief Cusano.
I may ask a couple of questions to Chief Cusano. So approximately, what, about 75% or so of the calls you get are medically related, is that?
That's, that's probably accurate.
And of those calls that are medically related, how many of those result in an ambulance transport?
Phew, I would probably say of the 75%, there's maybe 80% of those don't, don't end up in an, in an ambulance transport.
Oh, do not?
Do not.
Okay.
Well, no, I, I take that back, 20% do not, 80% do.
Okay, that's what I thought you told me about, okay. So the majority, the majority of the calls that we receive for fire are medically related, and the majority of those calls result in an ambulance transport?
Yes.
So, in my almost seven years on the council, there have been multiple times that we have browned out an ambulance due to staffing shortages, we have that now.
Correct.
But under this scenario, all three ambulances are going to be in service once our new recruits are fully on their own. And then at Station 34, you say you're, we're going to have the truck, and then what's, what's the other apparatus called that can do a?
There, there's going to be an air unit there, that, that's what we utilize on bigger fires, they refill our air cylinder bottles that they breathe with, it also is a, has a light tower on it to provide lighting. The other apparatus that will be out there will be our, currently is our OES grass rig out there right now.
That's what I was thinking, okay.
That, that will, once we get our new Type III engine that's on order, that, that should be arriving sometime this year, that will be placed out there, but it's the same type of unit, it's a Type III engine.
Got it, okay, so forgive my naivete here, but if the personnel is out at the station, you're going to have four people out at Station 34, if you had the truck and the engine that were taken out of service both there, couldn't they go, take the, the correct apparatus based on the call?
They could, but they, like, I mean, that, that starts to get a little bit more tricky, because now when they're out on the call, you basically lose, let's say they take the engine out on the call, now you lose the truck capability, which is, sorry, specialized equipment for the city, meaning we'd have no vehicle extrication equipment, we have no trench rescue, confined space, those are all specialty, you know, tasks that we provide to the community, and if that engine's gone, or they're out on a call in it, we lose that for the city.
Okay, so you always need to have at least the one truck in service?
We, we try to keep the one truck in service, correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
And Mayor, if I could add, I think it's important to note that when there's actually a structure fire, one fire station is not the only respondent to that fire, so they're going to come, I mean, if they're at the Empire Ranch Station in something south of 50, other resources are going to come, and vice versa. And so it's a unit that, you know, kind of mobilizes where the issues are. One of the biggest risks with the reduction in the, the fire engine is our ability to respond to multiple calls that occur, you know, so in general, if we, if you guys, if the community can just plan to only have one issue at a time, right, I mean, we'd appreciate it, because you'd get pretty much the same response.
Right.
But when we shrink our, our ability to respond, that's where our struggles and weaknesses.
So in, in addition to Vice Mayor Rethel's comment about needing more data about the response time, I think it'd be helpful at the next meeting if we had the data about the call volume, because it's my understanding that on average, depending on the station, they're receiving between two and eight calls in a 24-hour period, meaning the slowest station is averaging two calls, and the busiest station is averaging eight calls. I, I bet the general, the public thinks it's more than that, to be honest with you. And then the other thing is, what percentage of those calls are, hey, I've got a rattlesnake in my garage, can you come out and, and remove it? Because those are the types of things that may have to say, sorry, we can't send anybody out for that right now.
And it's interesting, in, in my conversations with some of the different shifts, that came up is, are we going to continue to respond to those calls even with these reductions? And my thought is, if we're able to respond, we will respond, right? I mean, if, they're not handling something of, of greater urgency, if you get called and you're going to a rattlesnake situation, but then you get another call that says, hey, there's a, a building engulfed in flames, of course they're going to call off that.
Right.
So that, that, that's the difference, I, I don't think we'll, we'll stop responding to different calls, it's just based on the availability.
Yeah. Did you have any questions for Chief Cusano?
At the risk of asking for a lot of extra data, we, we have had discussions about response time, and sometimes it's been in a vacuum, just looking at Folsom, and sometimes it has been foisted upon us, or we did some research and compared that regionally. I think we need to look outward in the comparison of response times as well, so to the extent that we can have it available, it would be worthwhile to have response time data for the region, so that we can see where we, where we stand relative to the overall picture of things.
We can get that data.
I, I think there have been times when we actually had significantly better coverage in Folsom than most of the rest of the region, and it would be worthwhile for people to know that.
And if you recall, at our July 8th meeting, we did show information with us dropping to the five stations versus, or the five, from five engines to four engines, that our capabilities were still similar to other departments around us, right? I mean, so it's not where we want to be, but I would say in many ways, Folsom has provided a higher level of service compared to our, our neighbors in some regards. So although this is a reductions in service, it's not necessarily, when compared to the other jurisdictions, something that's significantly different. And with the adding of the medic, I, I would say in some ways, there's enhancements related to those higher volume of calls.
Sarah?
Yep, go ahead.
Were you done, Mike?
Are, are we done with Chief Cusano?
Well, I mean, it's kind of on the same line, it was one of the things I was going to talk about after, but I'm just to clarify further, what I would be looking for as far as response time and data is data up to the end of this month, as far as our response times for a fire, and then in six months, looking at that data, and what, so we can see what changed, if things changed, and so we can compare where we are as far as service levels, I think our public would be, really respond to that, if it's only changing by 10 seconds, or, you know, 10 minutes, that's a big difference, and it would allow us to make a decision in an upcoming budget, and we can adjust at that point. And so I'll just reiterate, that's the same thing, this doesn't apply to you, but the same thing for police, we've never have a, we've never had a, since I've been here, we haven't had a presentation on their response times, so I'd like to see the same thing, I don't think it's going to change from now to then, because we have so many vacant positions in that department, but I think that we need to build that and, and give consistent information to our public, if not on a yearly basis, maybe even twice a year. So with them, I would like to see response times when the first officer arrives, and then when the second officer arrives. A lot of times they can't go in, I think that's a chief, a chief direction, but, so, I think, I think you understand. So I think in six months' time, maybe before the mid-year budget review, it'd be nice to see some of this data.
I'm just wondering if you could maybe re-send the presentation from July, because a lot of the information that
Sure.
people have just brought up is in that presentation, so we already have a baseline to look at?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Rethel, what other questions do you have?
I got one other question, but I am just going to touch, just so I don't have to come back to it later, on the metrics, I, I think, you know, we're talking about fire now because of the change and staffing, which I, I think it's tough for those of us that don't live this day-to-day to understand what that means, so we're asking for a, a more simple metric, and, and maybe it doesn't boil down to just one metric, I, I look at, from the police, you said, well, maybe a secondary metric is when the second officer arrives, I think of prosecution rates, right? Like, if we're, you know, our response time's great on PD, but our prosecution rate is really low on crimes committed, then that gives us a different view of how, you know, we need to move forward in providing service to the public. And I think establishing these, you know, I don't know what the number is, but less than five metrics for departments, and say that, hey, this is, this is what we're going to track, and this is a measure of quality of service to our public, is important. So I just kind of wanted to touch on that before I got to my next question, so I don't have to bring it up later in, in council comments, or when we go to, after public comment. My next question really is on revenue enhancement, I've gotten a lot of questions just as we, we go through this process, and I think you kind of talked about it a bit in the staff report, and, and also you mentioned it, that revenue enhancements do take longer to implement, and I, and I appreciate that, but my question is, when, when do we start discussing these? When do you bring something back, and maybe not a full-fledged, hey, this is what we're going to do for revenue enhancement, but is there a, or do you see value in having a discussion of our options of revenue enhancements sooner rather than later, to give staff direction on which revenue enhancements we want to kind of work up to the point where we can move forward with them?
Sure, I guess maybe a follow-up question is, what do you define revenue enhancements as?
I'll, I'll throw out a few, transient occupancy tax, CFDs for public safety, stormwater utility fees, payment in lieu of taxes, or pilot type of programs that are oftentimes implemented with development agreements.
Okay, so, so, I mean, we're actually working on the public safety CFDs, and, and we will definitely explore, we've been in conversation with, you know, the chamber-related TOT equivalent, you know, so that, that's one of the things we'll have to talk about, where there's economic development side that, that, and this is why it takes longer. So when you look at transient occupancy tax, you know, the, the city receives a share, but then our hotel operators have actually adopted another assessment, where they basically decided to assess themselves, that revenue comes to the city, and then we give that back to the chamber, which helps, you know, develop business and encourage people to come through marketing, and so it, it, I think the, the chamber in Folsom does a great job of, of doing a lot of different things, you know, one of the things that, and this kind of illustrates how long these take. So for example, we have the metal shop project, the, the potential ice arena in sports facility south of 50 near Prairie City Road. So one of the concepts to help provide funding for that is through additional assessments or equivalents to TOT of additional percentage points that are now charged to all those who stay in the hotels. So that would go forward to bond against, to issue bonds to help pay for infrastructure out there, to encourage them to come into the city, and so then they'd have to build it, and then they'd have to start operating, and then we'd see at some point, years into the future, it's built, and now we have people coming to the arena, staying at our hotels, shopping at our businesses, and so it's a really good use of funds, but I share that because it's not like an on-off switch. So to answer your question related to those is, we fully intend to explore any and all of those options.
Okay, so you'll, you'll bring them back, as they're fully cooked, you don't necessarily need guidance from us on which ones to work?
No, I mean, I really appreciate you, you identifying some of those categories, because the TOT in some ways, if we're, we can't necessarily go for an increase in the TOT tax if we're working with the chamber to increase the assessment, because at some point we become not comparable to the marketplace, where right now, we're a few percentage points below our neighbors, and so are we using it for general fund purposes, or are we using it for the economic development purposes? So that's in the, in the works, but it, it may not be TOT, it may be kind of a, yeah, a BID. The CFD for public safety, we're, we're actively looking at that, we've had conversations with the developers south of 50 already, to, to implement that on all the new entitlements that are coming forward, and so that, that's a top priority for us. Related to storm, it's something we don't have, I think there, there's, we weren't sure of the appetite for the council or the community to even have that conversation, but it sounds like we probably need to do that.
And then, the only other one I, I had on my list, and I think it's been brought up multiple times, but is the surplus property probably needs to, to come back, I think there was a few opportunities there also, which didn't move forward.
Yeah, agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cusano, ask you any questions before we go to public comment?
Just, just one quick thing, I'm sure that we will get more deeper discussion of the before and after realignment of CDD, PNR, BW and EWR, but there's a number, yeah, I'm reading it, I didn't remember all of that.
That's the Community Development Department, Public Works, Environmental Water Resources, and Parks and Rec.
The whole shoot and match except for public safety. I, anyway, I'm sure we'll get more detailed information about it, but there's, there's a number of transfers of responsibilities from one leadership to, to one leader to another, but there's also a series of these where they've been sort of renamed and clarified in terms of what the responsibility is, so just a little more discussion, because when they're all color-coded, green, green, it's hard to pick those out, but there's a bunch of them, so.
Sure.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, I think we're going to go to public comment, we have several requests to speak, again, we please ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and if you have a question that was not asked and answered, feel free to mention that, and I will take notes, and we'll circle back to that. So, Madam Clerk, if you could call them up.
Okay, you have about 12 speakers requesting to speak under this item, I'm going to go ahead and call the names, and you're more than welcome to line up and listen for your name to be called to approach the podium. And the first speaker is Elena Wagner, if you want to go ahead and approach the podium to speak.
She was in the front row, she might have, oh, there she is.
Good evening. I had planned comments, which were very detailed around the budget, but the presentation and conversation have moved me to scrap those for now and just email them to you all tomorrow, so, you know, they're very nicely and already typed up, I promise. I want to let everyone know in this room, if you don't already know, that south of 50, 50 is revenue generating for the city. The city managers in the past have been clear during budget discussions about that fact, and about talking about how, because we are contributing, we should be receiving public safety and other amenities and support for our facilities, just like the rest of the city does. I am a little exhausted hearing consistently online, and then again tonight, with some of the examples centering on south of 50, we're talking about Station 34, we're talking about Pospector Park, I'm not, maybe it's just- I'm not, maybe it's just what I hear because it's what I'm more attuned to because it's in my neighborhood, but that's what I'm hearing here is that reinforcement that it's south of 50's fault. And it's just not. I have run the numbers. I have talked to four out of five of you about it. Poor Brian has heard a lot from me. It is really hurtful to hear when it was daylighted in December 2023 on the dais about how the police officers that were meant for south of 50 were not being given to south of 50, that my family wasn't important enough to have public safety. And then we see here again, we look at this map. It takes me 20 minutes to get over on Empire Ranch Road at 39. Some of you know, and I think at least three of you, maybe more, have met my daughter, who is seven and amazing. And when she was five weeks old, she caught RSV, turned blue, code blue was called, she had to be resuscitated, she was intubated for two weeks and repeatedly failed coming off of intubation. I thought my baby was going to die. And seeing and knowing that we are the furthest from a hospital, that we don't have a medic is so hurtful because again, I see public safety not mattering for us because of the public perception about the financial situation of the city. And I'm not saying you have to give us one. I am just saying that this refrain, I feel like is being reinforced sometimes in the conversation that we're having in this room and on the dais. And I ask that you guys, please just be mindful of that, that it is really hurtful to those of us who live down there. Because I looked at houses in the north and I looked at houses in the south. I'm not good or bad because of where I purchased a home. It's just a home that was for sale like anything else. I apologize, I wasn't able to finish typing everything out by hand there, but I just, I just wanted that to be something that you guys were aware of, that that's how that does impact how we feel. And I think most of you at least like know me and know that I say this with earnest when I say just please be considerate of like how we feel and how you communicate and how these decisions impact like our safety and our families as well.
Thank you, Elena.
Okay. The next speaker, Jessica Whithar, followed by Bruce Klein and Kate Casera.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Whithar. I've been a Folsom resident for 15 years and I saw in all the social media that you were asking for community input on what's important to us. So I just wanted to throw my two cents in, in support of the library. I know it doesn't maybe get as much attention as some of the other issues, but for me, it's one of my favorite spots in Folsom. It's my happy place. I think a lot of people, when you think about who the library serves, most people probably stereotypically picture little kids at Storytime or seniors maybe getting help with the computers, things like that, which certainly is true and invaluable. But as someone who falls somewhere in between those age groups, I love the library. I go frequently. I know I'm always going to be greeted with a smile and a warm greeting from the friendly staff. I can peruse the bookshelves in peace. I can strike up a conversation with a new friend, new book, a book lover. I always feel welcome and I can always find either the new information I was looking for or a new adventure in a book group two or five. I know you're already aware how busy the Folsom library is with the most checkouts, the most visitors, the highest program attendance out of all the libraries in the area, and they do it with a lot less than some other libraries do. So I just respectfully request that they continue to receive the funding that they need to provide their excellent service to the community.
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay. Bruce Klein, go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Kate Casera and then Kinga Major.
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, members of the council, Bruce Klein, President, Friends of Folsom Parkway. No longer a Folsom resident, but I suppose, we still spend a lot of money here and we spend all of our volunteer time in our city that we've loved for so long. I really appreciate this open discussion about the needs. I appreciate the city managers being candid about where the situation is with the city. It's really critical to look at what the true needs are of the city. And what I'm here to talk about is how you can leverage resources and making sure we're protecting staff that help volunteer groups like Friends of Folsom Parkway leverage. Our group has been instrumental on the Adopt a Trail program, as well as the fuel ladder work that we've been doing over the last year. And it's remarkable what the volunteers have been able to do, just absolutely incredible. Moved from the Parkway Effective Community Service Day over to Hinkle Creek. We're excited to be doing our next two months' work at Hinkle Creek. But I will say, there is a lot out there. I mean, we, we've scratched the surface barely and we have, you know, a group of 10, 12 volunteers that will show up and it's leveraging city staff resources to make that possible. It's really a symbiotic relationship. I appreciate the manager saying that there are no further cuts out there. I'm certainly going to advocate always for our parks maintenance staff because they just do an amazing job keeping our work going forward. When our folks are cutting huge piles, they're coming through or their contractors are coming through. It really has to be both sides. The other thing I would encourage us to do is look for opportunities and be innovative. We would invite our fire guys and women to come out and join us and swing a chainsaw, perhaps training exercises, you know, it's really almost simulating some wildland fires, getting out there and working those chainsaws, cutting that stuff down and we'll be happy to drag for them. You know, they're going to be training anyway. We encourage them to come out and train in the real world. Revenue, I appreciate Justin, you raising it. I appreciate the manager having that on the list. One issue on revenue that I would encourage you all to look at is one that Councilmember Rafeel mentioned, and that's stormwater fee. The city of Folsom is the only jurisdiction in the region that does not have a stormwater fee. Pretty remarkable. And if you added a stormwater fee of five bucks a month, you'd generate about a million and a half to $2 million. And Stacy's going to check my math and, and really relative to actual homes, but when you apply that to commercial, et cetera, I mean, that, that would relieve significantly some of this budget pressure. This has been discussed in the past.
Bruce, I need you to wrap it up, please.
It has been discussed in the past. It's been brought forward and then just went away. So I would really encourage that to be out there. Last piece is, come on out, have some fun with us. We'll be at Hinkle Creek Thursdays and Saturdays. It's really fun. Mike was out there on Community Service Day for a number of hours and we really make a big impact. So I encourage all of you and anybody else who wants to come out and join us to do so. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Kate Casera, go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Kinga Major and Rob Allen.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm nervous, so.
It's okay.
Good evening, Mayor Kino, council members and Mr. Whitmer, city staff. My name is Kate Casera and I live at 328 Chan Court in Folsom. I have been the GIS specialist for the city of Folsom for over eight years. I'm not here tonight just as the GIS specialist. I'm here as a neighbor, a mother, a longtime resident of this area, and I'm deeply invested in Folsom's present and future. This city is our home and I've worked very hard professionally and personally to help make it stronger, smarter and more livable for families like mine. But the proposed elimination of my budgeted position as GIS specialist will hurt the very infrastructure that makes all of this possible. It is not just personnel change, it is a costly step backwards in how we serve the people of Folsom. Let me explain why. Since 2008, the city of Folsom has shrunk, staff has shrunk by around 40%, even as our population and service area have nearly doubled. Despite these cuts, staff has adapted. I've personally built tools and systems that allow departments to operate with fewer people while improving their service for our residents. We are now being told to tighten our butts, our belts again, but this time by eliminating the various systems that those, that make those efficiencies possible. Let's not forget, Folsom has not raised its sales tax in 29 years. If your household income hadn't increased in nearly three decades, you would, would your solution be to cut off your water supply to save money on plumbing? Of course not. You would look at sustainable revenue, not dismantle critical infrastructure. The city manager has compared the city budget to a household budget, but let's look at that more closely. If your costs and responsibilities continue to increase while your income stayed flat, you would start, would you start tearing out the electrical system without knowing how much it's going to cost? That's not fiscal discipline, that's a long-term damage. Cutting critical roles with no cost analysis, no replacement plan, no guarantee of savings isn't responsible, it's risky and it's expensive. Before recommending my position for elimination, there was no consultation with me or IT staff, no evaluation of what GIS actually does, no side-by-side cost analysis comparing staff to contractors. So let me offer that now. To replace the work that I do, you would need one GIS analyst, one GIS developer and one CMMS consultant. A GI, for the GIS consultants, between $100, $120 an hour to $160 an hour, times two people, times 30 hours a week, plus a CMMS consultant at $110 to $130 an hour, times 20 hours a week, is roughly between $500,000 and $624,000. That is nearly double my complete compensation. My work supports live emergency response systems for police and fire, asset management for utilities and public works by providing them streamlined workflows and more efficient reporting, data that supports planning permitting software, public dashboards and maps that increase transparency for both residents and council. I helped bring Station 39 online. We divided the city into 120 zones and calculated the response time from each one of those zones, creating a list of which fire station would be called first through the CAD dispatch system. So in answer to your question, I could tell you what your response times were going to be if you were going to eliminate a station. That's part of my job. I have built the enterprise GIS that is the backbone of our permitting software, our asset management system and coordinate data with emergency services to support dispatch.
Kate, I'm sorry, but I do need you to wrap it up, Senator.
This isn't back office IT, it's core operational infrastructure. Before any GIS or IT positions are eliminated, I would respectfully ask that the council require a full cost analysis, direct engagement with current staff, exploration of other revenue options like LNL truing up or a technology fee which every other jurisdiction in this region has. And public transparent outsourcing plant with hard numbers. We all want Folsom to remain a great place to live for families and businesses and future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next speaker, Kinga Major, followed by Rob Allen and Sheri Richter.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and community members. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity today to speak. My name is Kinga Major and I'm a senior at Folsom High School. As youth director for Friends of Folsom Parkway, I'm truly honored to be a part of this community and to have been so warmly welcomed into it. I'm also proud to work alongside an incredible variety of volunteers, from born members to neighbors, retirees to young professionals, who dedicate countless hours to caring for and improving Folsom's trails. Over the years, Friends of Folsom Parkway has partnered with more than 2,000 volunteers to plant trees, build bridges, remove invasive species, clear fire fuel and beautify our shared spaces. It is amazing to see how much behind-the-scenes effort these dedicated adults contribute, making Folsom truly distinctive by nature. Their hard work, passion and warmth create a community where residents care for their environment and each other, and it is the spirit that makes Folsom what it is today. I grew up in Los Angeles where trails were often unsafe and uninviting. For many kids like me, getting into nature was not a welcoming experience. It often felt inaccessible and even risky. That is why I feel so fortunate to be a part of Folsom, where Friends of Folsom Parkway work every day to make our trails safe, inviting and enjoyable for everyone. Being able to share these experiences and see our community thrive in nature is something I'm deeply grateful for. As we consider the city budget tonight, I want to gently emphasize that trails in open spaces are not areas that should be cut. They are essential to the well-being, safety and quality of life for our residents. Maintaining trails requires both the dedication of volunteers and the expertise of professional staff. Paid staff provide the oversight, training and care needed to keep our trails safe and sustainable. Without them, it would be impossible to fully leverage the incredible volunteer contributions that make Folsom's trails so special. Friends of Folsom Parkway will continue to partner with the city to care for and enhance our trails, clearing fire fuel, removing invasive plants, maintaining paths, supporting programs like Adopt a Trail. Protecting and nurturing these spaces is vital for our community. Let us come together to ensure our trails in open spaces remain safe, welcoming and vibrant by preserving and strengthening their funding this year's, in this year's budget. Thank you so much for your time and unwavering commitment in keeping Folsom distinctive by nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Rob Allen, if you want to go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Sheri Richter and Peggy Plitt.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, City Councilman Brian. Great to be here and see you guys. It's been a few weeks since I've been. I do encourage everyone that's here tonight to come to meetings more often. I've been here a lot since November and you really get to learn about the city, its spending, how things work. You hear the effort and things that the city council goes through and the mayor and the challenges that Brian faced. If you're only here tonight, or you're only here a few times a year, and I'm just talking since November, how much I've been here, about 10 or 15 years ago, I came to meetings off and on, but now I've just been here tons. So I really encourage you to turn out and really bring ideas to them. Real quick, Brian, can you flip to the slide that had all the positions that was listed, especially, yes, that one? On this slide, unlike months ago, or like months ago, I'm trying to get clarification. When we were discussing the hiring of firefighters, there were offers extended and I got clarification from city council how offers were extended, but then we were still discussing on if they should be hired. On the jobs that are listed here, have there been recent offers made that are going to be affected tonight? Do we know that answer?
Yeah, no, no filled positions will be affected, you know, so if you recall back in July, when the decision was made to go through with the recruitment of the firefighters, we had originally had 10 positions and we have a graduating class now. You know, two had dropped out prior to the start of the academy and then another dropped out. So we have seven graduates that will be filling. So essentially, we needed to hire those folks to fill the vacancies that were coming and we have retirements and then not everyone filled those. So the recommendation of five firefighter positions being eliminated are not going to be any positions that have a person filling those spots. Was that your question?
I mean, anything on here, like the police down near the bottom, the community service officers, are there offers out that are going to change based on your votes?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. I just want to get clarification because when that happened, that was, without me understanding, that was very awkward for me to see firefighters.
It was great for me.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I'm sure it was.
I remember that. So, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, it is awkward. And so in, in some ways, just like we're talking about the zoo.
Yeah.
It's awkward.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, but we have to have those difficult conversations. So when we were going and, and the reason why I brought up the 10 firefighter positions, whether we should hire those or not, I think that's something really important for the community and the council to have dialogue about, right? Because all the things that happen, people get really frustrated, in my opinion, when decisions are made, like, well, wait a second, I, I may have had a different opinion and I didn't even get a chance. So that's, I think, some of the beauty of what we're trying to bring to this is, man, we're in this together. And, and as, as difficult as that meeting was, I came out of that meeting feeling great about our community, about our fire department, about, you know, our public safety, but it was difficult to get there, but the outcome, I think, was really positive. We got to hear those perspectives and we made a decision that I think was ultimately the correct decision to hire those. And then, because the perspective was then shared And then, because the perspective was then shared by participants, by members of the community, by our fire personnel, that, hey, wait a second, there's more information. And the more information was, hey, we, we know that there are people that are going to retire, and if we don't fill these spots, we're going to have those retirees, and we'll have more vacancies, and, and we may be saving money, but we're not providing the service. And so our goal is, how do we provide the best level of service at all stages of this? And so, I mean, all these conversations are awkward, but I think we will have a better outcome because of the conversation.
No, I appreciate it. The explanation was important to me, because I was like, we're not, and I don't like seeing the cuts, of course, anyone losing their job, but it was, it's like, are we doing this again where job offers have been made?
No.
And, okay. The email that I sent, I think, months ago about the volunteering thing, you're going to see an updated version of that sometime soon, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker will be Sheri Richter, followed by Peggy Plitt and Rochelle Barcelona.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Akito, and council members. As president of the Docent Council, I once again stand before you to speak on behalf of the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary. In a free-market society, money and budgets are extremely important for the sustainability of its entities. However, often the benefit to humanity of some things cannot be monetized. In a world that often feels disconnected, we believe in nurturing the bonds that truly matter. At our sanctuary, we're not just protecting animals, we're fostering a deep love for nature that resonates within children and adults alike. Every animal comes to us with a unique story, it is these stories that connect our visitors to this very special place. Every interaction, every moment of shared wonder reinforces the simple truth, our connection to the natural world is part of who we are. By showing our kids the magic of these wild creatures, we're teaching them empathy, responsibility, and the profound beauty of a life intertwined with all living things. We're not just saving animals, we're cultivating a legacy of compassion for generations to come. The Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary is a regional treasure. While neighboring cities look for a place to connect with wildlife, we stand alone as a haven, a sanctuary, where rescued animals find a forever home, and our community finds its heart. The Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary is a valuable educational resource for the Sacramento region, attracting over a hundred and twenty thousand visitors annually and reaching thousands more through our outreach programs. It provides engaging hands-on learning experiences for people of all ages, promoting a deeper understanding of wildlife and conservation. Regional school districts visit annually, it draws schools from as far away as Truckee, San Francisco, and Oakland, and returning visitors from as far away as Alaska. By offering a safe and welcoming space for families and hosting various events, the sanctuary also serves as a significant tourist attraction and a key contributor to the local economy. There are several ways that our public can become involved at the sanctuary. Every year, we welcome and train volunteers to join our Docent program. In 2024, we generated over fifty-five thousand dollars in tour revenue and donated more than ten thousand volunteer hours. This year, we're on track to exceed both of those numbers. In addition to the Docent program, there also is a volunteer program through the zoo directly. We encourage everyone to become a member of the Friends of the Folsom Zoo. That membership offers unlimited access to the zoo on the days they are open, and then through donations to the Friends of the Folsom Zoo nonprofit, this agency provides the zoo with financial support, as well as purchases for much-needed unfunded expenditures. Last year, they contributed money towards vet care, equipment maintenance, and zookeeper education. The public can also adopt our animals. We encourage everyone to attend our special events, and to such as upcoming Halloween and Wild Nights and Holiday Lights. There are camps available for almost all age groups, beginning with ABC Zoo Camp, growing all the way through our junior and senior zookeeper camps, and we encourage people to visit our online wish list. Folsom Zoo is not a zoo like any other, it is a sanctuary, a safe and nurturing place for both of the animals and the people who visit.
Sheri, I need you to wrap it up.
I will, and just say, you cannot put a monetary value on the greater good this place provides for our community, it is priceless.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next speaker, Peggy Plitt, followed by Rochelle Barcelona and Antoinette Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am president of the Friends of the Folsom Zoo, and I am also a longtime docent at the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary. We noted that in the staff report, there was a discussion about a nonprofit potentially taking over the zoo. Well, I wanted to inform you that Friends really exist to support the zoo economically, and it has long been one of our objectives, to reduce the subsidy that the city provides by helping to support financially in a more robust way. Over the last several months, we have been working diligently to research what other facilities similar to ours have done, and what we can do. We saw that the Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo had experienced similar economic situations, and is doing much better now. We toured their facility, which resulted in multiple contacts, including their very successful Friends organization, and also with an economic consulting firm that they hired to create an economic development plan. So I'm pleased to announce that earlier this month, the Friends contracted with that same firm, Robinet Economics, and we are having our kickoff meeting with them this coming Monday, September twenty-ninth. A key focus of their business plan that they're working on is to look at governance options and operating structures for the zoo sanctuary, and make recommendations. They will be meeting with the city manager and with Kelly, the Parks and Rec Director, and I would hope that you would all make yourselves available to meet with them as well, to let them know what your concerns, interests, and values are as it relates to the zoo sanctuary. It could be something as little as a thirty-minute Zoom call, so it doesn't need to take a whole lot of your time, and we'll get that scheduled, we'll work on getting that scheduled if you're available, and we would absolutely love to have your participation in this economic development process. It will take about ten to sixteen weeks for that plan to be fully researched and developed, and alternatives identified, and they plan on, they and we plan on making a presentation back to you in February with the results of their study and their recommendations. I just want to remind you that over the past nineteen years, the Friends have donated over now one point five million dollars to the zoo. Our endowment fund, however, even though it has more than doubled since I started on the Friends Board, at the end of nineteen, no, not nineteen, at the end of twenty-seventeen, we had six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in our fund, and today it is, and that was in twenty-seventeen, at the end of that calendar year, and we're about one point five four million dollars now. So we have more than doubled the size of our fund, but it's certainly not enough to take over operation and management on a daily basis of the zoo sanctuary. We are currently cultivating two new board members, we've recently introduced them, they'll be attending their first meeting with us, we hope, on this Thursday, and we are working with some members of the community for fundraisers that will help build the fund. The more money we have in our fund, the more money we are able to use to help support the zoo sanctuary. So I look forward to working with you, and I think the economic development plan that is being put together will really help look at a governance structure that, or governance structure alternatives, that will give us a thoughtful approach to decision-making.
Thank you, Peggy, thank you for that information, I'm sure we'd all be happy to participate in conversations with your consultant.
Okay, the next speaker will be Rochelle Barcelona, followed by Antoinette Clark and Loretta Hedinger, and then the last and final speaker will be Colleen Shannon.
Good evening.
Good evening, hi, Mayor and members, I'm Rochelle Barcelona, I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Folsom, past Park and Recreation Commissioner, past Library Commissioner, and currently on the Board of the Friends of the Folsom Zoo, and I am here to express my support of the zoo. I know some people say we just have a zoo, I say we are so lucky to have this community cultural treasure in the zoo. It's nothing like anyone else has in the area, and like has been mentioned earlier already, people come from way outside of the area and bring their dollars here, not only to spend at the zoo sanctuary, but outside in restaurants and businesses around town. In fact, I'm so proud that our zoo sanctuary staff is really known internationally for the work that they have done with the animals there, and especially with its mission to teach and educate on compassion and respect for all animals, including humans, and I think that's something that we all really need right now in our world. One of the things that I love about the zoo sanctuary is that people who no longer live in Folsom, they're in their thirties, forties, fifties, even up until their sixties, who come back to visit, come to the zoo. My daughters do that, they now live in Oregon and Los Angeles, they're twenty-nine and thirty-one, when they come and bring friends with them, one of the first places they go is to the zoo sanctuary to show their friends where they grew up. It is something special that we don't want to lose. The city manager said, you know, he wants us all to be aware of the challenges at the Friends, we are oh-so-aware of these challenges, and we are working on these challenges diligently, as you could hear by what Peggy talked about with the economic report, and we just hope that you will work transparently with us to find these solutions. The easiest solution isn't always the best solution, so we're committed to finding the best solution for the city, for the animals, and for all the residents. One point of clarification that I did want to bring up is, it was showing that the subsidy is approximately one point six million dollars right now, but I don't think that factors in the new revenue from the increased prices. I think that takes that down to about one point three, and I just hope that's reflected in reports and discussions going forward. Like, twenty-seven seconds, like Peggy mentioned, you know, we are looking for new board members, anyone out there, who's interested in, we're really looking at people who have different skills and experience with how to tackle problems like this. So if you're interested, go to the Friends of Folsom Zoo Sanctuary website and let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker will go ahead and be Antoinette Clark, followed by Loretta Hedinger and Colleen Shannon.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm Antoinette Clark, I've been a resident here for twenty-five years, I'm a registered civil engineer, and I've worked with the State Department of Transportation for over thirty-five years. So in my experience, I'm very concerned when I hear about the levels of first responder protection lowered, and also the fact that, over those twenty-five years of living here, I've seen such tremendous growth on both sides of Highway Fifty here in Folsom. So with population growth comes extra traffic, we've all witnessed the backup traffic on the left-turn lanes, especially at East Bidwell and Iron Point, backing up all the way into the through lanes at various times of the day. So there really isn't a peak anymore, it's throughout the day. And with that comes higher crash rates and a need for first responders, which we now have all heard, that the majority of their calls are not fire-related, they're more related to injury or health-type issues. So along also with that growth has been the expansion of many of our bike paths throughout the city streets and bike trails, and an increased number of motorized bicycles and scooters. So we can all expect that there are going to be some conflicts now at driveways with the pedestrians and with these new motorized types of vehicles. And are we prepared to handle that if we're going to be lowering the first responder potential rates and responder times? And also, another thing to consider, I hope that you will also consider, is that during different times of year, those crash rates increase, the onset of inclement weather, with the rain, you're going to have more crashes. Also with school, when school comes in, there's going to be more potential bike ped with traffic-type crashes. So when we're looking at the reduction, please also consider that these things are cyclical, and are we prepared to go with the change if things do elevate? And that's basically all I wanted to inspire you with.
Okay, thank you very much for coming up.
Okay, our next speaker will be Loretta Hedinger, followed by Colleen Shannon.
Good evening, Loretta.
Hello. First, I want to say how much I appreciate the way that we are now handling our budget discussions. I so appreciate that Brian is tackling them head-on and publicly, and I came to say a few words about the zoo, but others have been much more eloquent than I. I'm not involved with the zoo just as a resident who has brought children and grandchildren there, and to me, it's as much an icon as the Rainbow Bridge for Folsom. So we've got to be really careful about messing with the zoo. But we all know that if Measure G had passed, we would not be having this much stress now. And I know that people are smarting from the defeat of Measure G, and have just basically put the whole idea of a sales tax increase over into the impossible category. Perhaps it would be impossible to do a one-cent sales tax, perhaps we should consider a half-cent sales tax. I have talked to people who were opponents of Measure G, leaders, some of them, of the Measure G opposition, and their hindsight tells them now that they should have voted in favor of it. I don't know how many of them who were the leaders are willing to stand up and say, "I was wrong," but at least one of them told me that. So I really think that in these times of pain, we need to revisit that possibility of a half-cent sales tax. Frankly, the city blew it in trying to support without supporting the Measure G. And so with the new approach of openness and transparency, the public is able to see for themselves the problems that we have that are due to lack of revenue. And I don't know who will tackle that again, but I think it's not something that should just be put over in the impossible category. We have a lot of new residents, as that one lady was reminding us, they care deeply about what happens here. And I really think that we need to look at all avenues, not just the ones that look more possible, let's look at this impossible one also.
Thank you, Loretta.
Okay, our last and final speaker is Colleen Shannon, if you want to go ahead and approach the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council, you know, I can't come to a city council meeting without having an opinion. So I just want to express a tremendous amount of empathy for the task that you guys have before you, of having to make some really difficult decisions that are really the consequences of kind of past councils' decisions, and with the way that things have gone, I do not envy you for a second, so, good job, you guys are doing a great job. Kate Casera brought up a really excellent point about the expense that comes along with outsourcing things that our city has gotten so great at handling in-house, and I want to echo that, not only as far as the IT department is concerned, but also with another potential revenue generation for the city, which has to do with permits for businesses. And as a, as a resident of Folsom for going on fourteen years, as a small business owner, as a member of the Board for our Chamber of Commerce, as the Chair for our Library Commission, I've seen firsthand the challenges of getting a business permit in the city of Folsom, I've seen the direct costs that it is to our small businesses to go through that process, and I would just like to urge the city council to consider two different options. One would be bringing that permit process back in-house. I understand that that would be an initial upfront cost to the city of filling in those positions, which is challenging when you're looking at cutting positions in other departments, but if you look at the amount that the city spends in outsourcing to, to a third-party agency that does not have the same kind of care that people who live and work in Folsom would have, if we do not, if that's not something that the city's able to do to bring in-house, I would urge the council to relook at the, the contract that's in place, and the obligations of the third party, how quickly they need to respond, how in touch are they with getting businesses open within the city of Folsom? We had to jump through a lot of hoops to open our automotive shop, it cost us almost half a million dollars to go through the process of not only getting the permit, but also having to pay to have occupancy in the building before we were able to get construction started, and those are things that could have been avoided very, very quickly. An automotive shop should not have to submit a school impact report, and they should not have to submit a sewer impact report on an existing building, and... And those were some of the hoops that we had to jump through. We thought those were the only things we would have to do, but once we submitted those, then we got another couple of things, and then we got another couple of things, and another couple of things, and it was doled out very slowly. And I think the city could do a much better job of generating revenue in the city by getting businesses up and going a lot faster. I know Taryn Rose would certainly agree with me. Another point to bring up with permits in particular would be the idea of bringing back over-the-counter permits. That was something that was done away with, I believe, during COVID, when it became scary to talk to people over the counter. And that's something that could also really speed up the process of getting businesses up and running within the city of Folsom. So those are my two thoughts on that.
And you wrap it up, Colleen.
Yes, I have a question, and then I'll make one last point. I do fully support keeping the library assistant position as Chair of the Library Commission. I cannot possibly let that go. We need our library. And the other question I have for you is what else is the city subsidizing besides the zoo? So the zoo is subsidized at $1.5 million. What else does the city subsidize, and how much does that cost? And what else could we get out of subsidizing besides a great resource like our zoo?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you. Brian, do you want to tackle that last question? Then I'm going to ask Chief Cassano to come back down here, too, please.
Sure. So first off, related to the building permit process, I definitely would welcome the opportunity to meet, you know, with anyone who's had challenges with that, just so we can learn more about what the process is, to see how we can improve. Also, as far as what we are subsidizing, we're subsidizing anything that doesn't generate revenue. So, I mean, the police department, the fire department, you know, parks and recreation, the zoo. We're a service-oriented business, or municipality, and so typically, the aquatic center is subsidized. Most of the reasons why we subsidize it is because, for example, to make... If we were to charge an entry fee to the aquatic center so that it would not cost money, folks would say, "Well, why are you charging so much to get in?" And so we recognize that we can't have cost recovery on everything. And so we just highlight those areas where, you know, related to the zoo, maybe we'll never get there, where we eliminate completely the subsidy. The main reason for this conversation is, how can we generate ideas? How can we work together to find something different that will help us provide that service in a more efficient way, so that we can provide all those necessary things for law enforcement and for fire services and all those things? So there's a lot of things we subsidize. Pretty much everything we do is a subsidy because the revenue comes from you. I mean, we don't generate the revenue.
Thank you. Chief Cassano, I just, I want to go back to the... Just where the apparatus is placed, because obviously, you know, our job is to provide the very best services we can with the resources we have. Every section of the city is important. We don't want any section to feel like they are not valued as much as others. Can you talk a little bit about... I mean, obviously, we have six stations, but even when we have all ambulances in service, we only have three ambulances. So not every station at this point gets an ambulance.
Correct.
But can you also please talk about... It's typically the engines, and in some cases, a truck, that are the first responders, and what sort of medical capabilities do they have while they are waiting on an ambulance to do the transporting?
Sure. So in our regional system, the ambulances are... I mean, there's not a whole lot of them in the entire region, and so they get kind of sporadically placed throughout the day. We're running out of the city, other units are running in the city. And that's why we rely on the engines and trucks as our first responder. The nicety about the city of Folsom is that our fire department, all of our apparatus are ALS-capable, which is advanced life support. So all of our apparatus, the truck, the engines, they have equipment on them, just like the ambulances have. The only thing they can't do is transport, and that's why they end up waiting for the ambulance. In our region, ambulances are typically, sometimes not even dispatched, code three, lights and sirens. That's why the first responder will get there, and then either they'll request the ambulance if it's necessary, or the ambulance is coming at a normal driving pace, unless they're requested to speed up if it's an actual emergency.
And in terms of other cities that have their own fire departments, the city of Sacramento, the city of Roseville, do they all run their own ambulances also, or do they contract out with others?
The city of Roseville contracts out. The Sacramento Fire Department has their own ambulance. Metro Fire, they have their own ambulance, and they also contract some of their stations with ambulances.
Okay.
Kasumnas has their own ambulance as well.
And then, just in terms of the proximity, I mean, probably Station 34 and then 36 are the farthest away from the hospital. Does that factor into where an ambulance is placed? Or what goes into determining where the ambulance is placed?
You know, ambulances are just kind of placed so that they can get to really anywhere in the city. We have one at Station 37. What you sometimes don't want to do... I mean, there's one on the north side of the river at Station 36, and that's because there's a barrier, there's a river there. So we need an ambulance on that side typically. But what we really don't want to do a lot of times is put them on the outskirts of the town. You want them really more centrally located, and that's why we have one at Station 37. It can get to the south side of 50, it can get to in the Empire Ranch area. It's just more centrally located. The same with, you know, well, there's one at 35 now, but 38's not too far away, and it's basically centrally located in the city as well.
Okay, but so, okay, so Station 35 by Walmart and Station 34 south of 50 are basically swapping the engine and the truck, but both of them will continue to have lifesaving capabilities?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have another question while you're here. A very popular night. I would say we're going to miss you now.
I thought I was retired. I keep having to come out.
We keep you here with another hundred questions or two. Anyway, I did want to bring up that we do have cross-coverage with SAC Metro when we're down an ambulance or two. I don't know quite what the ratio is, but they do send ambulances up here to sit at one of our local stations when we don't have the capacity to provide service.
They'll send an ambulance up. That's when... It's not that common that they'll send one up just to sit at one of our stations. Regionally, they have a matrix of where they're looking at ambulance placement. Typically, you know, unless Folsom is completely out of the ambulances, like they're all on calls or sitting at hospitals, and the region is flushed with ambulances, they may send one up into Folsom to sit at our station. But really, they're more or less responding from areas that they're available when we need them. And that's part of our mutual aid and automatic aid system. Like, we rely on El Dorado Hills Fire Department. They provide an ambulance that'll come down sometimes for us. And it works vice versa. We'll respond into El Dorado Hills as well.
Right, and then I understand we are switching to having some EMTs only on staff?
We currently have two EMTs on staff. We typically like to have paramedics, firefighter paramedics, and that's just really because, like I said, all of our apparatus are ALS-capable, and we need that paramedic to do that.
And maybe I should have said paramedic instead of EMT, but...
Okay.
And what would be the threshold to adding additional ambulance? You know, should the budget allow for increased ambulance service and staffing?
I think the threshold to that is we really have to look at the unit-hour utilization of the medic units. And when that starts to get over a certain threshold, because which, you really don't want to add an ambulance if it's going to cost more to staff it than it's going to bring in potential revenue. So right now, I don't think we're not there yet for a fourth ambulance. You know, maybe down the future a little bit, we will need another fourth ambulance.
And there is reimbursement for ambulance transports?
Yes.
That is one of the income-producing things that our fire department does.
Correct. We have a billing agency that... They deal with all that, insurances, Medicare, Medi-Cal. And then, of course, with the Medicare, Medi-Cal federally, we get reimbursed through that PPGEMT program. So yes, we rely heavily on our ambulances for revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we want to make a motion so we can focus this discussion, and then we can make our comments based on the motion? That work?
I'll move that we accept the city manager's recommendation and approve Resolution Number 11463.
And I will second.
All right. As the maker of the motion, I'm going to let you go first, Councilmember Kozowski, and then we'll...
It's been challenging times working our way through the anticipation of this day for the last six or seven years. And it has been coming for that long, and plain as day in the future. And the future's here right now. It's... I think the way that we have responded at each step of the way has been responsible. And I think the work that the staff has done, the very careful work that the fire department and the police department have done to prepare, you know, for these adjustments, and especially the work and leadership of our city manager has been exemplary in dealing with what we have to deal with right now. So I don't have any further comment except to say thank you to the staff. You guys have done a magnificent job of getting us through a difficult discussion and preparing a plan that hopefully will be successful. And I look forward to having happier discussions in the future. Thank you.
Next, Mayor Bethel.
Yeah, I think I commented a little bit during the questions earlier. I don't think I have anything else to add in the areas of, you know, the staff reductions for this Phase 1. It's not a position, I think we've all said it, it's not a position that any of us want to be in. But I do think getting our house in order and stopping in a budget crisis every single year... I've mentioned it before, I've gone back. I'm new to this council, but I've watched it for years. And going back as far as you can on the website for budgets that are posted on the website, there's been a budget crisis in the city of Folsom. And so I appreciate the efforts to right the ship, as painful as it might be. And I do want to make a few comments on the zoo, because I think that's an ongoing discussion. And let me start with, I was on a zoo roof on Monday of the Reptile House, tearing off the roof, not with my city council hat on, but with my rotary hat on. And absolutely, absolutely. In preparation for that, I, you know, I helped create signs as part of the Folsom Leadership Project back in 2014 with the mayor. I love the zoo. I always go when family's in town. That being said, that the subsidy number is large. And so I really appreciate the efforts that you guys are going through in order to figure out how we move forward, how we keep the zoo viable for future generations in Folsom. Being that I like to research everything way too much, I dove into the 2007 Zoo Master Plan. And looking at it, you know, the... Back then, the revenues that the zoo generated was enough to cover the operations and maintenance of the zoo, but not the salaries. And I think that's what we're in a similar position to today. There was a lot of recommendations in that 2007 general plan to change that fact. But here we are, what is this, 18 years later? And the numbers have changed, but the ratios are still roughly the same. And so it does look like we need to take a different approach. I did appreciate the comments about the Sacramento Zoological Society. Dove into that a little bit, too. There are still two full-time positions, roughly $350,000 subsidy that comes from the city of Sacramento to the zoo. So they are not standing, you know, completely alone. That makes up 1% or 2%. It's a very small number of their budget. They're three times the size of the Folsom Zoo. And so I don't think we're here tonight to say that... Or I'm not, at least. I'll speak for myself. I'm not here to say that there's no subsidy going forward, but we got to figure out, you know, how to make it work. There's some other things that I found really interesting in that 2007 master plan. One of them was that, you know, the transition of the gift shop into more of a revenue generator was great to see, and having those revenues be attributed to the zoo, also including the train concession, because most of the folks that are coming for the train are also there for the zoo. They're coming and they're doing both, so I thought that was interesting. So I'm making these comments for your economic consultant to watch this later and hopefully include these in the report. I also love the zipline idea. I've been a long supporter of getting a zipline in Folsom. The zoo would be a really cool spot. I think we have a volunteer first rider on that zoo to test it. Mr. Holderness in the audience?
Maybe a gondola ride.
A gondola ride to honor our sister city. But there was zipline, amphitheater, sleepover area. There were a lot of ideas that were in there that were... Could be revenue generating, and I appreciated those. The only other thing I saw that was in there, too, was looking at the costs of the services that are provided. And I don't know how many of these things are still going on today, but just something to talk about in our future discussions. You know, are there services to the community that the zoo provides that we wouldn't necessarily have or would have to pay for? And those were quoted as wild animal rescue, assisting animal control, disposal of roadkill. I'm not sure that's still going out of the zoo. It is? I'm getting some thumbs up? No? Getting some thumbs down, some thumbs up? So what are these other things that are there to make sure we're including those community benefits that come with the zoo? Maybe we've gotten rid of them, maybe we bring them back. You know, I think the zoo used to be a much more informal thing that worked with other city departments and met different needs. And maybe one of the challenges is we've gotten more siloed and more professional, and maybe we need to go back to more, hey, the zoo helps out some of our other departments, and our other departments help out the zoo. So I'm definitely willing to climb on the old roofs, tear off tiles, replace things, replace railings throughout. I know a lot, a lot of our community members are. And I think we can... I think we can make the zoo bigger and better going forward. Maybe not bigger. We can make the zoo even better going forward. It's already a gem. And I know this process isn't going to be easy. There are going to be awkward conversations, but it's all part of the process, and I look forward to working through the process with you all as partners.
Thank you. Councilmember Warba?
Yes. I want to do several things that have already been said. I do appreciate one of the comments that they appreciate our city manager having these financial discussions head-on and publicly. And I think the word that keeps coming, popping out to me is the word "stability." And I think, you know, in the past three years, many of you have been in this room, too, when I've been asking questions about our budget. Why are we going over millions of dollars without accountability, without it coming to council and being held accountable? And, you know, Brian and I have had many conversations on this, and every single time, he's been able to deliver, maybe not the first month, but after that, every single time, he's been able to deliver and answer quickly, I mean, within minutes, if not within the next hour. And I really think that the trust he's been able to build with me with that accountability and that transparency by presenting the real numbers is, I think, by the calmness in this room and the discussions we've had the last several months, is showing up in our public as well. And I think, I feel like they are, you are, also rebuilding that trust with the city. And I think that's the most important thing we can do to bring about that stability in our city. You know, I think public safety is a big deal to me, as it is, I think, to the... Most of my, if not all of my council members, my colleagues. So I think, you know, continue what I said earlier about having these data points about our service levels and our response times, so we can compare today's numbers to six months from now and really take a real view, same with our budget. What are the real numbers with these response times? And then we can make a decision going forward from there. I do want to speak about south of 50. I think languaging and communication really do matter in this city. You see it in this conversation. And I think, you know, we got to be more creative and aware of how we speak of south of... Even saying "south of 50," that means we're separate. So, you know, they have been, south of 50's revenue has been subsidized... So, you know, they have been, south of 50's revenue has been subsidizing north of 50. That is very true. So really being cognizant, and I think our city manager and our city council are, about what we are providing down there and how we use the money that is due. I did appreciate, Ken Casanos, our chief's, answer your question about the fourth medic? That was going to be a question on mine. Is that something we can look at? And I think that goes back to having data points on, you know, would it be, would it be usable and relevant, and would it make sense? And it might not make sense. I think in perspective, I do appreciate the emails we received from a few of the staff members that got let go. That's not an easy decision. I know that Brian did not take that lightly. And I think at this point, I have to trust our city manager's decision, his experience, his expertise, and just allow him to make some decisions that are hard. But in a way, this is what we hired him for. We hired him to stabilize our budget, to rebuild the trust in our city, and to continue to build a great culture and build up the morale in this city. And unfortunately, that is hard, and so some positions have been cut, and I apologize for that, but that's just what it is. And so, you know, I bless and I hope that everyone that did get let go can find a new position or find some other side of it. But I do want Brian to know that, I know that he took this seriously, and it wasn't on a whim. So anyways, but in conversation about the zoo, it does make us look at a want versus a need. We are cutting several positions, over 10 positions in public safety, and we have to look at the other options, other things that we are subsidizing. And I think that we want to put a plan in place to how do we retain the zoo? How do we work in a private-public partnership? Is there somebody out there that's going to work with us to maintain it? And I'm looking at all the docents here who have been coming for, I think, two years now, pretty steadily. But that is, that also can be a tough situation. So, you know, I would like to kind of see a timeline on this, a plan in place. Are we looking at a year or three years out? And maybe those are conversations that are going to be, continuing to have. But that is unfortunately something that we have to look at. And maybe it's going to be the best solution, as one of you said, is maybe it's going to be even better, a private company or a private partnership, or, you know, SAC Zoo, you know, there's lots of conversations about zoos lately. Maybe it can even be better than it is right now. So I do appreciate the stability, you know, obviously, I think this is going to go forward. And thank you for your patience and your understanding and the calmness of today and many of the conversations that we've had the last six months, so.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Leary?
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate all the people that showed up to come up with some new ideas on how we can make things better and expressing all their concerns. And it's been a really difficult time going through this process and seeing where some of the cuts have been made already and the proposals for future changes. I do like the idea that the reorganization of the department is going to enhance a lot of the collaborative work among the departments and supporting each other in accomplishing their missions. I think there are some cost savings that can be associated with that as well. There are some skills or needs that each department has that can be contributed to another department. There, I appreciate Colleen Shannon's comments, too, about, you know, maybe not outsourcing everything. I don't really believe that outsourcing is always the cheapest way to go and is not necessarily the most stable or consumer-friendly way to go. And I'm very saddened to hear about the proposal to let the staff members go. I'm not sure where we are exactly in that process. I think they're currently on leave, but have been notified. And I am concerned about people not having been given an advance notice, you know, or as much advance notices.
So I can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah, so we have notified those affected employees, and, you know, nothing as far as the layoff is going forward until the council makes a decision. So if the council were to make that decision tonight, they would receive the layoff notices tomorrow. And then per their MOU or different labor agreements, we would follow the process. They're on paid administrative leave now, and then they would continue to be on paid administrative leave, depending on their agreement, either 10 or 15 days until the process that is stipulated in the labor agreements is fulfilled.
And so I guess one thing that was missing from this conversation, or in more depth, was the amount of the cost savings. I think you said something, we're around $80,000 or $90,000. Was that per year or per month, or what?
Yeah, so essentially, I mean, we've done a tremendous amount of research. I've worked personally with IT firms in other jurisdictions that handle the complexities of municipal government, that range from GIS services to handling the complexities of our dispatch center with clefs and Department of Justice requirements. I mean, it's very complicated. And so moving forward with this decision is very challenging and difficult, but we have a plan to be able to make sure that those services are in place. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that we have an IT consultant firm that is, you know, if approved, coming this week to make sure and to start our audit and go through those things. And I would anticipate we would bring a temporary agreement at the October 14 meeting for the council's consideration, so that we could have that six-month plan to do the IT audit to help the managed IT services, and then ultimately put together an RFP so that all, we can make sure that we get the best possible price going forward.
Okay, thanks. I know those are awkward questions to have to answer. This is an awkward situation for all of us. And I appreciate the work that you've done on it and the explanation. In addition, I kind of wanted to talk about, you know, we had people come here and talk about Friends of Folsom Parkway's and our, you know, our open spaces and our trails and our, and we had people come from the zoo, are really valuable resources for economic development. And I, that's why I think it's well worth looking into all of the possibilities that we have to maintain these essential resources while we're still looking at other options for economic development in conjunction with the chamber. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Raythel about seeking additional sources of income. And I think it would be fair for us to maybe do, have a little bit more conversation in the future about some of the draws on the general fund that are costing the city a considerable larger amount of money than the zoo is currently costing us, and some of those being the lighting and landscaping districts. And that's a whole nother complex issue, but we still have a lot of work ahead of us to do. But I appreciate all the feedback, and I don't know, this is still a difficult decision for me. Thank you.
And I don't want to repeat everything that has been said, but I agree that this is a difficult but necessary decision, and I also want to thank the city manager and his staff for all their work on this. Thank you to the public for your feedback. We do greatly appreciate it. I do have just one comment on the zoo. I also did a little bit of research over the weekend. Jocelyn, maybe with a nod at your head, you can confirm, but I believe we're regulated by USDA and not the Association of Zoos and Aquariums because we're a zoo sanctuary. But I did see that the city of Waco, Texas, just last month, is dealing with the same, you know, scenario that we are. Theirs is called the Cameron Park Zoo, and they have retained a consultant. And I thought these were just some interesting facts and figures. Again, we are not accredited by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, but of those 225 zoos and aquariums that are accredited under AZA, 22 zoos are municipally owned and operated, eight aquariums are municipally owned and operated, 32 are governed by another form of government or district, 133 operate as nonprofits, and 30 operate as for-profit businesses. So it seems like a lot of them are going this direction. And although they may not be, you know, we may at some point get to the point where it's not owned or operated by the city, to Vice Mayor Raythel's point, it doesn't necessarily mean there isn't a subsidy. And I just think in terms of the budget, you know, with the public support, 1% of our general fund budget going to the zoo. That's kind of how I think about it. So anyway, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the ball?
Okay, councilmembers Kozowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Anna Kino?
Yes. Thank you very much for that. That takes us to city manager reports.
Thank you. Just a few items. Natomas Station Lighting and Land State District, there's a timeline update. The city of Folsom has extended the timeline for the Natomas Station Landscaping and Lighting District Proposition 218 process to allow for more thorough financial analysis. In early 2026, the city council will review the preliminary engineer's report, announce its intent to form the district, and direct staff to mail Proposition 218 ballots to the property owners. Forty-five days later, the council will hold a public hearing, count the ballots, and may approve the final report and confirm the new assessments. We'll also have community outreach, and the reason why we're sharing this is we want to make sure that the community knows that we haven't forgotten about them and that this will not change the overall timing of the Prop 218 assessment process that we talked about earlier. Also, we have our Folsom Water Vision draft report available for public review, and we encourage anyone who wants to review that and comment to do so prior to October 10. And then coming up, we have our homecoming parades. Vista de Lago and Folsom High School will host their annual homecoming parades, and the city is assisting with the road closure. Vista is on Wednesday, September 24. And so just so you know, Golf Link's Drive between Empire Oaks Elementary School and Vista de Lago High School will be closed from 6:00 to 7:30 parade, or PM for the parade. And then Folsom High School Homecoming Parade will be held on Wednesday, October 15. motorists should be aware of road closures along Coloma Street, Sutter Street, Reading Street, and Leaderstorf Street from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozowski, any comments?
Just one thing, I wanted to double down on something that Bruce Klein included everybody in on. First of all, Community Service Day happened on Saturday and was a smashing success. An enormous amount of work got done by close to 2,000 volunteers, so thank you to the organizing committee for that once again. Twenty of those volunteers and myself were out at Hinkle Creek clearing ladder fuel out of one small part of Hinkle Creek Nature Center, and we pulled enough debris out of that, like, probably three-quarters of an acre to fill this room about eight feet deep, which should give you a sense of the scale of the issue of ladder fuel and fire safety work that has to happen in our park areas. So kudos to the Friends of the Folsom Parkway. That project will be ongoing every Thursday until further notice, or it gets too dark to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Raythel?
Just want to give a quick report out on the Sacramento Sewer District. The, they had an agenda item at the last meeting, and this really dates back to the time where my colleague served on the sewer district. But with all the changes coming from the 2010 change in standards with sewage disposal, the project has moved forward, and unfortunately, one of the effects that they've seen is bio solids accumulation. This gets into the weeds and technical details, but they showed basically to resolve this issue, they're looking at another $450 million in capital expenditures. Good thing is, originally, they had come in, not quite a half million dollars under budget what the original estimate was. Turns out, they're actually going to have to spend that money now, and they didn't know this until they had operated the plants for many months. Now they've come up with a better plan. They've been doing kind of emergency operations since then. This is a very big number. The good thing is, you know, there's, I think, between almost 700,000 of us that get serviced by SAC Sewer, so the costs are spread out amongst many, 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 many folks. And so long-term, you know, this, their long-term financial plan, they'd be looking at about $6 per year increase, and they do it over four years, so like $1.50 for four years of an increase to the sewer rates. So not a huge impact to an individual household, even though that number is very, very large because of the amount of people that they serve. So just wanted to throw that out there. If anybody has a real interest in bio solids or sewage, the staff report is out there. Feel free to give me a call on it, and then we can talk about that. Also wanted to give a shout-out, the Sister City celebrations, the Folsom Historic District Association, the Mirror House, also Palladio. You guys did a great job, and I think the community really enjoyed celebrating our sister city. And I'm sad that Service Day is over for the year. It is obviously my favorite day of the year. Get really excited every year, had a great time out there, looking forward to starting to plan 2026 as Service Day.
Community service every day.
Thank you. Councilmember Rorba?
Yeah, I just want to do, I'll just jump on Community Service Day. I was at Granite City, or Granite, not Granite City, Granite School redoing their entire landscaping out front, and that was really fun, and with the rotary as well. And then we went over to Castle Park to help finish some cleanup. There's still some cleanup to go, but, and that leads me to Castle Park, which I want to do a quick update on. I've been in three design meetings the last week, I think, seven to 10 days. And what's really great about the last one I was in, first of all, I think our staff's doing a great job keeping under budget, or trying to keep under budget while serving our community. One of the last meetings that we were in, we were able to connect with some ADA-accessible needs, so parents of ADA kids that need different things. And they were so excited to be a part of the input of the park. And what was really great to see is, in the draft design, that there are, we were already implementing some of the things that they were looking for and love in other parks. We are always ADA-accessible, but sometimes that doesn't mean we meet the needs of, you know, different entities. So we put our heads down and got to work and really kind of figured out some more things that we could do. We adjusted some things. And so while Castle Park isn't going to be everything to everyone, we are definitely making some great improvements there that can serve a broader and more inclusive community. But what was great about that meeting as well is there were so many things that we learned as we have two more parks on our plan to build, Benevento and Neighborhood Park One, which will have a new name, I think, in your district, and what we can do there and what is needed. So I think we're going to continue to keep them a part of the process, and it was just really fun to see how excited and welcomed they felt by being able to just give some input and such great people. And that's it. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Leary?
Okay, I'm going to have to add a little bit more about Community Service Day. I think this is the 12th one I've organized, and as usual, it was a lot of fun, and we had a great turnout and got a lot of the work done in Natomas Station that hasn't been able to be done because we're still working on our lighting and landscaping program changes. But we actually managed to produce over 40 large bags of brush and trash and repaint probably between a quarter and a third of a mile of rusted wrought iron fencing along Iron Point, or not along Iron Point, along Turnpike Drive. And I think everybody enjoyed the day. It was a great turnout to see, I don't know how many projects got done, could use a little report there, but there were a lot. And the other thing I did want to bring up that I think Brian touched on a little bit, and that is, you know, communicating about updates, and I was just wondering if there's any way that council members could have access to some kind of lists or a way to communicate with the residents in our districts? Because right now, it's a little haphazard, you know, being able to use, you know, the lists that we've gathered and social media, but the message always doesn't get out to everybody, you know, which inspired me to send you the email from one of my residents to get an update put out there.
Yeah, I appreciate all the information that the council shares with me and our team, and it helps us, you know, develop plans going forward. And I guess, you know, Councilmember Leary, maybe at our next, you know, opportunity to get together, we can kind of talk about how we can better do that for you.
Yeah. I appreciate, I think everybody, everybody's district would like a little bit more info.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to everybody again for coming out tonight, and that will be it.
All right. And I just want to thank Jennifer for serving as our clerk at the meeting tonight, and we will adjourn at 9:22. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.